Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the regular board meeting of the Halton Catholic District School Board. May I ask all viewers? May I ask all lecturers, please turn off your camera? Cameras? Call to order. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the regular board meeting of the Halton Catholic District School Board on Tuesday, June 7th, 2022. Please note, this board meeting is being livestreamed and will be posted on the board's YouTube channel. Tonight, we have trustees attending in person with a few participating remotely. In order to be recognised, please use the handoff feature in Teams to be automatically placed in queue. For those in the boardroom, please remember to turn your desk mics on when you speak. For those attending remotely, please remember to turn on your microphone and camera when you are recognised to speak. Turn off your camera and mics otherwise. Trustees, please remember that if you are not recognised or when you do not have the flow, your mics will be muted. We have guests online tonight, and I would like to extend a very warm welcome to each one of you. Couple of things before we start with the meeting is the Ontario Association of Parents in Catholic Education, OFC, is the voice of parents and guardian of children enrolled in publicly funded English Catholic system of education in the province of Ontario. On May 20th, OFC hosted its annual conference at Bishop Reading in Milton. Among the recipients is an honorary lifetime membership award was presented to our own representative Denise Garell Tettey, the HCSB OFC Director and our very own Director Daly. In Director Daly's absence, I collected the plaque and will now present it to him on behalf of OFC. Thank you, Director Daly, and congratulations. Congratulations, Director Daly. During the month of June, our schools will have the opportunity to offer the novena of the Sacred Heart of Jesus, beginning Wednesday, June 15th, with a day of prayer in preparation and ending on Friday, June 24th, the solemnity of the Sacred Heart of Jesus. June is also the National Indigenous Month in Canada, and throughout the month, our schools will be celebrating and honouring the history, heritage and diversity of indigenous people across our communities. And June is also designated as the Pride Month in Canada, and throughout this month, our Catholic Education Centre and each of our HCSB schools will fly the pride flag as a symbol of our commitment to nurturing safe, welcoming and inclusive communities, besides organising several events in all our schools. Moving on to the next order of business, which is the land acknowledgement, opening prayer, national anthem and the oath of citizenship. I now ask staff to please start us off with the land acknowledgement.
Halton, as we know it today.
Is rich in the history and modern traditions.
Of many First Nations and the Maiti.
From the lands of the Anishinaabe.
The Atawandran.
The Haudenosaunee.
And the Maiti.
These lands surround Denise greatly.
Are steeped in indigenous history.
Are gathered today.
On these treaty lands.
Our Catholic social teachings call us in solidarity.
With our indigenous brothers and sisters.
To honour and respect.
For direction.
Waters, plants, animals and ancestors that walked before us.
All these wonderful elements of creation exist.
Gifted to us by our Creator God.
We acknowledge and thank.
The Mississaugas of the credit First Nations.
For being stewards of this traditional territory.
Thank you. Trustee Mastia Mar, would you now please lead us in the opening prayer, the national anthem and the oath of citizenship?
Thank you and through you, Mr Chair. Please join me in the sign of our faith in the name of the Father, the Son, the Holy Spirit. Amen. Dear God, we thank you for all the gifts and talents you are giving us, but please let us use them for the betterment of our community. Thank you for putting us in these positions where we can advocate for those who need it most. We pray for those affected in recent tragic shootings, and we ask you to lead us in the path of peace. As well, we ask you to protect all those that are vulnerable, including those who are part of the two SLGDBQ+ community this month and always. Finally, thank you for another day. Amen. Father, Son, Holy Spirit. Please stand up for the Okanagan and the...
You're muted, Mr Chair.
Okay, trustee Carabella, can you hear me?
Yes, yes, thank you.
The motions adopted in camera and the information received in camera, there are no motions adopted in camera and no information received in camera. Next order of business is the approval of the agenda. Are there any additions, deletions or corrections to the agenda?
Mr Chair.
Give me a second, I need to fix my list. Okay, trustee De Rosa.
Mr Chair, under the session Staff Reports, which deals with 2022 and 23 budget estimates, page 79 and 100. When we flip to that section, on page 85 in particular, there is a recommendation of two motions. Will we be required to vote on those two motions tonight? And if so, why are they not under the action items?
We are voting on the agenda items, additions, deletions or corrections to the agenda.
I was going to propose, Mr Chair, depending on your answer to my question, to include, if we're going to vote on those two motions, to include them under the action items. That's my proposal. But if we're not voting on those two motions, then I'm happy with approving the agenda as it is.
Thank you, trustee De Rosa, I was coming to that. Any item, which item are you talking about? Information item, right? Item number 10. So trustee De Rosa, if you read the package that was provided under information items, it is very clearly said in the report that in two weeks' time, this report will come back as an action item. And if you look at our order of business information item, that's what it says. We do not take any action under information items. Thank you, trustee De Rosa.
All right, so we're not voting on that then. Thank you.
Trustee Carabella, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr Chair. I have a notice of motion.
Carabella, can you state the title of your notice of motion?
Okay. Upholding the sanctity of life in fundraising services at Halton Catholic District School Board sterilisation.
Okay. Give me a... Thank you, trustee Carabella. It will be placed under item 10.9, put in the sanctity of life sterilisation.
Thank you.
Do we have any additions, deletions or corrections to the agenda? Seeing none, I shall call the vote and shall take this to a vote. Trustee Honchanada?
I'm in favour.
Trustee Guzo is away. Vice Chair Agnew? Trustee Murphy?
In favour.
Trustee O'Brien?
In favour.
Trustee De Rosa? Trustee De Rosa?
In favour.
Trustee Carabella?
In favour.
Deboe?
In favour.
Trustee Mastia Mar?
In favour.
Trustee Tokiva?
In favour.
We have, we have five in favour, one opposed, the more areas, the agenda is approved. Moving on to the next order of business, and that's declarations of conflict of interest. Are there any conflicts of interest to be declared tonight? Trustee O'Brien?
Thank you, Mr Chair. Item 9.2 Budget Estimates, this one deals with teachers' salaries. My wife is a teacher with the board, therefore I will be declaring a conflict of interest.
Thank you, trustee O'Brien, I made a note of that. Seeing there's no other conflict of interest, we shall now move on to the next order of business, which is presentations. There are no presentations tonight. Moving on to the next order of business, which is delegations. We have four delegations this evening. Our delegates are online, and I will let them know when to begin. I see trustee Carabella's hand up. Trustee Carabella, is your hand up regarding this item or something else?
Yes, thank you, Mr Chair. It's regarding the declined delegations. I'd like you to speak to the number and what the topics were and the rationale for declining the delegations.
Trustee Carabella, we are not yet, I just started speaking to this. So, we'll get there. We have four delegations this evening, and I said our delegations are online. Since we have several delegations tonight, before we proceed, I would like to explain the ground rules as per policy I-06, and I hope you all understand and we follow them. Delegates will have precisely 10 minutes to speak. We'll try to have the clock on screen. There will be alarm at nine minutes, and at 10 minute mark, you will end your presentation. Please do understand as we have severe time constraints tonight. After the presentation, trustees will have three minutes to ask two clarifying questions based on the presentation only, and the questions will be based on what you present. Presenters are expected to maintain a level of decorum. The chair shall act as a moderator for each delegation presentation and govern the questions from the board of trustees. Trustees, you do not need to thank the delegates, rather get to your questions directly, and the chair will thank the delegates on your behalf, on behalf of the board of trustees. So item 5.1 Declined delegations, trustee Carabella. We have four declined delegations for tonight's meeting, and trustees have been informed. There were two delegations regarding a letter to Minister Leche. They were declined on May 18th and May 27th as the matter was regarding masking. The matter was dealt with, and we cannot undo that. There was another delegation that was declined since it's regarding police and school programs. Since our policy is clear on who can delegate, it was declined, did not meet our requirements. And then there was another delegation which was declined. It was supposed to be title communication between parents and the board. It was supposed to speak to how difficult it is to receive responses and information from the board. This was initially approved. However, on receipt of the script and the matter which did not pertain to the request, delegate was given multiple opportunities to correct and update, which did not happen. Hence it was declined. So these are the four items, trustee Carabella. Trustee Carabella, you still have your hand up?
Okay, I'll take it off. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Carabella. Trustee O'Brien, sorry, trustee O'Brien.
Mr Chair.
Thank you, Mr Chair. I just wanted clarification on the last delegation on communication. Was it rejected on some content in the delegations? Was it, can you be more specific? Was it inflammatory?
This is a normal process we go through with delegations. They need to conform to our processes, and there was communication going back and forth, and opportunities, at least two or three opportunities were given to, I'm not sure how many, but a couple of opportunities were given to delegate, to modify and change the delegation, so that's why it was.
Okay, thank you, Mr Chair.
Thank you, trustee Carabella.
Thank you, Mr Chair. In regards to the two delegations about masking, because I didn't see any emails and requests about that, is it about the letter or about masking? Because, yeah, I'd like to understand why a parent cannot have their freedom to express their needs, whether, what they want to say to the school community.
Thank you, trustee Carabella. This was declined way back May 18th and May 27th. You probably have received, you have received the declined delegation requests way back when. So there was, and this is what we had done in the past, when a motion is passed and it cannot be undone, we move on to the next business that we have, and we do know it's a moot point anyway now. So, so trustee Carabella, I hope that answers your question. Trustee De Rosa?
Thank you, Mr Chair, for your explanations of the declines. Did I hear you right when you said that they get, delegates get one or two, maybe more opportunities to modify their delegation in order to conform to rules and regulations? As far as I know, and please correct me if I'm wrong, the key rule with respect to delegations is not to identify specific names and individuals that are either being, that are subject for the issue. Are we actually modifying the narrative on behalf of the delegates? Am I to understand that, or did I misunderstand your explanation of that?
We have a delegation policy, trustee De Rosa, policy I-06. If you read that policy in detail, it is very clear about the purpose of delegations to the board. It's not to hang anybody, or it's meant to get the business of the board moving forward, you know? And we have the policy for a purpose.
May I have a follow-up?
De Rosa, I have the floor. So if you read that policy very clear, it's clear about why we have delegations, and we want to hear from stakeholders and delegations, so that's our purpose. Thank you, trustee De Rosa.
May I have a follow-up, Mr Chair?
Go ahead, trustee De Rosa.
Okay, I will go back to the policy and clarify for my own. But since we're discussing the topic here, are we actually writing or suggesting written content for the delegation? That's really what I'm trying to get to. I don't suspect we do.
Trustee De Rosa, when you suspect something, it's a good practice to ask the question. So we do not write anything for anybody. We suggest to them that these things are appropriate, does not conform to the policy, and that's, we have staff who is doing it all the time, and we have excellent, excellent staff here. So we do not write for people. We suggest, and we hope that we have cooperation from everybody. Thank you, trustee De Rosa. Moving on.
Thank you, Mr Chair.
Carabella.
Thank you, Mr Chair. So one of the delegations was declined because they weren't from the region of Halton?
Correct.
And so, is that, can you confirm that that person is not delegating tonight?
So, our policy is very clear on who can delegate. It says delegations are accepted from the region of Halton stakeholders. To my best understanding, we have a delegate who's approached us and requested to delegate, and the delegate to my knowledge is from Halton. Now, there are other interest groups which he has chosen to request support from, and which is perfectly in line with the policy. So, we probably need to go back and revisit the policy if at all we want to fix, you know, correct things. But that's my suggestion, trustee Carabella. As far as I'm concerned, as chair, I look at a policy and it meets the requirements. Thank you, trustee Carabella. Moving on to our delegations now. Item 5.2, we have a delegation from Black Teachers Association of HCSB. Our first delegation this evening is, as I stated, from the Black Teachers Association of Halton. HCSB, you have 10 minutes for your presentation, and you must stay to your script. That is part of tonight's board meeting package. I will now ask staff to help me in keeping track of time. Give me a second, and I'm going to get Rosie to help with the watch, with the clock. Our delegates, at nine minutes, I will jump in and say one minute left, and I'm requesting that we stop the delegation. Okay? Sounds good?
Yeah, sounds good.
Give me a second, please. Okay, you are good to go. Please go ahead. Thank you.
I'm Mia James, and I'm delegating on behalf of the Black Teachers Association of HCSB. As we begin, for the sake and dignity of the black community, please do not question the validity of our collective experiences of systemic and overt racism in this board. Please spare us the pain of re-traumatising ourselves by having to repeat and listen to story after story of racial aggression, microaggressions, dismissive comments, being called racial slurs and being passed over for positions of leadership. It's all very real. Having reviewed the material I sent to you prior to this delegation, I hope that you have moved beyond this type of thinking. Representation matters. At five years old, I became a member of the Halton Catholic District School Board community, starting my elementary career at Holy Family in Oakville. We lived in a white bungalow across the street from the school, the black family in the white bungalow. In 1985, we were one of a handful of black families in Oakville, the only one at Holy Family. I was there until 1994. More black families joined the community, but I never had a black teacher. But it was the 80s. So, I continued my journey through the board as a high school student at St Thomas Aquinas. I started in 1994, graduating with honours in 1999. Five years, eight teachers each year, 40 in total, give or take, not that we're counting. But in case you were, they count for me, my brother, my sister and our friends, both black and non-black. By the end of our 15-year stretch as students in this board was approximately 50 teachers, not including coaches, guidance counsellors and administrators. We never even saw a racialised or black teacher, and trust me, I didn't miss it. I was looking. But it was the 90s. So, like many educators coming to teach in the board in which you grew up, feels like coming home. So in 2005, I came back home. In the few years in which I ventured beyond our borders, I learned there were equity officers in other school boards. During my interview, when asked if I had any questions, I inquired, is there an equity officer at this board? The response, there isn't a need for that in this board at this time. But it was the early 2000s. So, with this, I continued my journey as one of a handful of black teachers in the Halton Catholic District School Board. Through the years, I noted the promotion of former teachers to leadership roles. They gained positions as vice principals, principals, superintendents and even directors of education. I get to see anyone in those positions that look like me. Today, 17 years later, I continue my journey through this board as one of a handful of black teachers. Now it's 2022, 37 years later. So, this is just one of the many glaring examples of anti-black racism that is deeply entrenched in the HCSB. The board continues to engage in practices that uphold anti-black racism. The Black Teachers Association of HCSB was formed in January of 2022. We currently have eight members. We aim to achieve a more equitable system through collaboration with black educators and HCSB stakeholders. Our mission is to build equitable educational environments in which all students and educators, particularly our black students, can flourish and achieve their goals. Our aim perfectly aligns with HCSB's document, Racism and Discrimination Responding with Faith, Hope and Love. The document states, "Our commitment to provide ongoing opportunities to acquire the knowledge, skills, attitudes and behaviours needed to identify and eliminate discriminatory systemic barriers under the code is embedded in our equity and inclusive education policy." However, there is a clear difference between policy and practice. Anti-black racism training is not a requirement for administrators in this board. It is also not required for staff. The board continues to use the ineffective Train the Trainer model. Anti-black racism is a specific and distinct issue and should be handled as such. Continuing to have improperly trained administrators lead staff in dismantling oppressive systemic institutional colonial practices is dangerous. There needs to be transparent measurable goals which move far beyond performative professional development. Racism and discrimination responding with faith, hope and love outlines four clear steps. Disrupt a name, explain and support, document and ensure accountability, reflect and restore. This looks great as a process, but how is it actually practised in this board? Who is held accountable when the processes are not followed? How are people supposed to, in good faith, report incidents of discrimination to improperly trained supervisors? In November, sorry, in the, earlier in the school year in this board, a teacher directed the N-word at a black student in front of an entire class. After confronting the teacher, when the students felt they could safely report it, they did. They followed the first step outlined in Racism and Discrimination Responding with Faith, Hope and Love, disrupt a name. As promoted in the document, the school community would expect the three other steps be followed, but this was not the case. The teacher was allowed to remain in the classroom for another four hours unsupervised with the children. Parents were not notified of the incident until 7:30 that evening, almost eight hours later. The students were not provided with a formal apology from the teacher or administration, nor offered any trauma support for eight months and are still waiting. And that teacher continues... And that teacher continues to teach in this board. Also stated in the document is H C S D, H C D S B aspires to uphold that all people are created in the image and likeness of God, and as such dignity is inherent in all. Genesis, chapter one, verse twenty-seven. Are we acknowledging the dignity of black students when the staff are told that children above grade seven can read a book with the N word? In order to do so, quote, teachers should consider the teaching that must be done to impact the use of this word and the historical and current context with the students, end quote. This is to be done by the teachers in a board where anti-black racism training is optional and when done is delivered by a cast of almost all white administrators who are not mandated to be trained in equity. This is not only as absurd as it sounds, it is also dangerous. Racism and discrimination responding with faith, hope and love also notes, we are a Christ-centered environment dedicated to providing learning and workspaces free of discrimination, harassment and violence for all students, staff and members of our H C S D community, H C D S B community. Harassment and discrimination will not be tolerated, condoned or ignored at H C D S B. I have been actively advocating for change within this board for two years, beginning with an email sent to the Director of Education in June of twenty twenty, shortly after the murder of George Floyd, to which he did not respond. I will say it again, he did not respond. I have spent countless hours in meetings with senior administration and the Senior Manager for Human Rights and Equity pleading for the safety of the black of black community members in the Halton Catholic District School Board. I have to repeatedly ask for follow up. The response is often deafening silence. Contrary to the marketing displayed on the poster, I have been ignored. The black community has been ignored. In one meeting in January twenty twenty-two, a year and a half after I had sent my initial email to the director in which I expressed an urgency for this work, he offered to share skeleton plans of the board's plan for addressing anti-black racism, skeleton plans. I agreed to look at them. He then let me know he didn't have them on him at that moment, but offered. Could we schedule another meeting next month and he could share them then? I am not alone. There have been numerous complaints of anti-black racism in this board that continue to go unaddressed. Students who are brave enough to speak out but not safe enough to reveal their identities have publicly expressed their concerns are not heard or acted upon. Parents have delegated in front of this board, their pleas have gone unaddressed. As black teachers in this board, we shoulder the weight of this work. Students, particularly those who are racialized, look to us to guide them through the complexities of colonial institutions founded in systemic racism. And we take on the work because we know all too well how dangerous and exhausting navigating the landscape of the school system is for black students. Black teachers are also repeatedly tapped as resources for this work as black people often are. The reality persists that combating anti-black racism is driven by members of the black community. We are often leading colleagues, chairing communities, delivering workshops, organizing book clubs, driving advocacy initiatives and championing equity teams without the expectation of anything in return besides a small glimmer of hope that our tireless work may result in any small change, which is always grossly disproportionate to the amount of effort we exert. We also immerse ourselves in this work without public recognition of our work as credit is often given to those in leadership positions above us, further reducing the presence of our voices and further devaluing us. This was and no longer is acceptable. There are several key issues which need to be addressed by the board as outlined in our memo, which was sent to you on May thirteenth. The formation of advisory committees, hiring practices and retainment, curriculum support, a policing-free H C D S B, system-wide goals and intentional measurable and time-specific professional development. At the heart of all our recommendations is the safety, health and well-being of all students. The delays and lack of action are gross display of how anti-black racism is not prioritized in this board. It is a gross display of how blatantly overlooked and undervalued our black students and black teachers are in this board. How much longer are we expected to wait for change? To wait until our until our value is valuable enough for the board to see us and the needs of our students? It has been two hundred fifty years and in all honesty, we can't wait a moment longer. We are aware that there are procedures to undertake and equity audit and data collection will be a next step. However, the board needs to take ownership and accountability for failing to foster a safe environment where all where all students can truly achieve, believe and belong. We are here representing the Black Teachers Association of H C D S B because representation matters now as much as it did in nineteen eighty-five.
Thank you much. I'll now open up the floor to trustees to ask two questions and you have three minutes for your two questions. Trustee O'Brien, give me a second, please. Trustee O'Brien, go ahead.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair, to Ms. James. James, your argument is very persuasive. And I want to just, through your delegation. I I do have one question. You mentioned that while attending school in Halton that you never even saw a racialized or black teacher. I can't imagine the negative impact of that. It's been horrible. And also, we at Halton Catholic have never had a school named after a black person. Did that in any way affect you?
Ms. James? To our delegates, if you are comfortable.
I got it. Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair. So I think the impact of it all would negatively affect any racialized or black student at the Halton Catholic District School Board. There's lots of, there is a great deal, and I sent you the document, of data and evidence that is researched, Canadian data and evidence is researched to show the negative impacts of not having representation, whether it be name of a school, teachers, curriculum, which is also mentioned in our memo, anything along those lines, lack of representation is very impactful to all students, particularly black students.
Thank you, trustee O'Brien. You have a second question. Thank you very much. Thank you, trustee O'Brien. Next list, we have trustee Ohan Chanada and then trustee Bowie, trustee Ohan Chanada, you're the floor.
Thank you. And through you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Ms. James. My my question is either Director Daly or Sita, if she's on the line. In the delegation, it's it's pointed out that there's four steps, disrupt and name, explain and support, document and ensure accountability and reflect and restore. Could I get a summary of what the Halton Catholic District School Board has done in regards to the racism, discrimination responding with faith, hope and love? In regards to these four steps specifically?
Ms. James?
No, to Director Daly or to Sita at this point?
Can you hold the timer, please? So trustee Ohan Chanada, the questions are for the delegates. And the question is very specific on the delegation that they presented. You'll have an opportunity to talk about this in response to delegation. Thank you, trustee Ohan Chanada. You have a question for the delegate? Okay, thank you. Moving on down the speaker's list, we have trustee Bowie. Trustee Bowie, you're the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and through you, I'd just like to thank the delegate. I know that we've heard from students that share many of the concerns that you've shared here tonight. I just wanted to ask, I know that you mentioned a May thirteenth memo in your delegation. I don't believe that that was forwarded to the student trustees. If you could send that to us, I would love to take a look over it. And that's my only question.
Ms. James?
Thank you. And through you, Mr. Chair, absolutely no problem. We will forward that to you as soon as possible. Thank you.
Do you have a follow up question?
That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Bowie. Moving on down speakers list, we have Asher Agnew. Why should Agnew have a vote?
Great, thank you. And through you, Mr. Chair. Ms. James, just a question for you with respect to the the piece around the training. The anti-black racism training is not a requirement. Could you speak a little bit to that piece, your understanding of? What is it? What is a requirement? How teachers access that, just the whole piece around training? Because I mean, that's a big piece that that's not a requirement. Could you speak to what is actually happening right now, if you don't mind?
Ms. James?
Through you, Mr. Chair. So from my understanding from being an educator in the board, what is happening is that there is performative displays going on. So for example, we do have P A surrounding equity. But as I said in my delegation, the issue is how it is delivered and who is delivering it and what kind of training and background and education they have. This isn't something that can be delivered by someone after taking a few hour. Just basically watching a slideshow, you give the slideshow to someone else and then take pieces and videos and show it to the staff. This becomes much deeper learning than that, particularly given the the makeup of the staff. So it becomes much deeper than that. So there will be evidence that there is training. But again, the question would be needs needs to go deeper than that. What kind of training is being delivered? When is it being delivered? How is it being delivered and by whom? And is it effectively reaching the staff and the teachers in order for them to navigate these difficult waters? And are they, do they feel equipped to be able to do so? And my answer would be absolutely not.
Why should Agnew, you have a follow up?
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair. And so is are there any specific training modules or trainers coming in that are from the black community? Is any of that happening? Or to the best of your knowledge, is the majority of the training that's being delivered, offered and delivered using that train the trainer model?
So the training that is provided to administrators is train the trainer. So that training does come from someone with an equity base. But beyond that, to my knowledge, no, unless people are doing things on their own, which probably is not happening, there isn't. It's not directly to staff. There's always that stopping point of administrators learn and then must disseminate to staff.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Why should I do? Thank you, Ms. James. I do not see any other hands up. So I must thank you profusely for taking your time to come here and present to the board. A response to your delegation will be dealt with under agenda item eight point one. Thank you. Moving on down to the next delegation, item five point three, equity equity at H C D S B. The second delegation is from Halton Parents for Change and Halton Black Voices. I will let you know when to start. Give me a second, please. Okay, you are ready to start? Please go ahead. Thank you.
Good evening. Tonight I will be delegating on behalf of Halton Parents for Change alongside Janil Thomas of Halton Black Voices. We've had the opportunity to review the memo as put forth by the Black Teachers Association of H C D S B and trust those around the table have as well.
As community groups, we are here to share our thoughts and suggestions on ways that H C D S B can effectively action the requests of the teachers of the Black Teachers Association of H C D S B and support our black communities. We look around this boardroom and we look around at the senior staff of H C D S B and it is clear that our black students are not represented in these spaces. We know that representation and advocacy can profoundly affect the outcome of our students and we need to ensure that they are represented at every level at H C D S B.
Unfortunately, due to the lack, due to the lack of student census data, it is difficult to precisely state the number of black students in our schools. However, out of approximately five thousand teachers, three thousand three hundred and thirty-seven permanent and one thousand five hundred and forty-nine occasional, as per the vaccination attestation records of twenty twenty-two, only twelve identify as black teachers. That is zero point zero zero two percent of teachers. Zero of our administrators or senior staff are black. Can anyone walk into one of our H C D S B schools and truthfully state that zero point zero zero two percent of our students are black? To put that in context, that would be only seventy-four students out of our thirty-seven thousand students at H C D S B.
How can we claim to be committed to fighting anti-black racism and changing the systemic biases that exist within our schools if we fail to ensure that black voices are being heard? To start, the board must engage our black communities as part of the advisory committee to start putting black voices at the center of the organization. This needs to start immediately, particularly given the hiring is underway for the new director of H C D S B.
These advisory committees must be fully funded by H C D S B. We need to stop asking black people to volunteer their time to educate the white system. We know H C D S B has the capacity to do this. Most recently, when confronted with the discrimination that two S L B G T Q students and staff felt within our walls, a committee was formed and the results have been resounding. For Pride Month, we see celebrations throughout our board. For Black History Month, this has fallen time and time again to our teachers.
We need more black teachers at H C D S B. We all know that that will take time. So during this process, the board must engage black community members and local black-led agencies who love and champion the H C D S B students and who can come and support, educate and supervise black students. This is directly, this will directly positively impact the black student experience at H C D S B by providing equitable representation within H C D S B schools and classrooms. The board has a responsibility to make our schools a bastion of safety for students and staff. To do this, our hiring practices need need to involve. We need to ensure that all students, all educators that are hired are reflective of our of our community and that have a proven record, track record of anti-racism, anti-impressive and equitable practices.
We also need to ensure that we are retaining the amazing teachers that we have. Without a safe way for teachers to be able to report and discuss instances of anti-black racism, whether overt or via multitude of microaggressions, why would we expect them to stay at H C D S B? We need to listen to the teachers who are so eloquently presenting tonight. This is their lived experience and so far within H C D S B, it has not always been a good one.
How do we implement this in our schools? We find external facilitators to our for our black student associations. We ensure that these groups are available at every single H C S B school. We take, we take the onus off of the black teachers and have external facilitators that will come help plan black-focused events. We stop limiting Black History Month to February and engage with the local businesses, local agencies and community groups. We engage with guest speakers, guest educators and community educators in a way that we have done with our indigenous community, with our indigenous community with grandmother's voice.
To successfully do this, we ask that H C D S B to immediately create a task force that is composed of experts in fostering black achievement to have these measures instituted and ready to mobilize in September twenty twenty-two. Our students need this, our teachers need this. We, as a H C D S B community, need this. Thank you.
Thank you for your presentation. I shall now open up the floor to trustees, if you have questions, two questions in three minutes. The Ohan Chanada, you have the floor.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair. Let's hope this question flies to Alex and Janil. Just the the external facilitators in in the delegation there. Talking about external facilitators for our black student unions. Where would those facilitators come from? Like, do are there agencies and pardon my ignorance, I don't know. Where would these facilitators come from?
Question to our delegates, anyone can choose to answer.
They would come from the community, directly from the Halton community. Other black-owned organizations that are plenty in Oakville and and in Halton and from parents and and community members that do want to engage.
Thank you, trustee Ohan Chanada.
No, perfect. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Ohan Chanada. Any other questions from trustees? Seeing none, I would like to thank Ms. Powers and Ms. Thomas for your presentation. Really appreciate you coming and delegating to the board. A response to the delegation will be dealt with under agenda item eight point one. Thank you. Moving on to the next delegation. The next, the third delegation is from Ms. Lorenko. It's going to be talking about advisory authority of school councils and the duty of the board to respond. Ms. Lorenko, are you online?
I am.
Give me a second and we shall get the clock started here. Okay, you're ready? Okay, you're good to go. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, trustees. Tonight's board meeting agenda has an information item regarding a recommendation to the board from the Catholic Parent Involvement Committee, C P I C. This recommendation was made through a unanimous resolution of C P I C at its April sixth meeting. The resolution is with respect to the advisory authority of school councils and duty of the board to respond. Presenting this as an information item precludes action from being taken and essentially sets the recommendation up to fail. The board's delegation policy allows trustees to respond to my delegation by approving a quote, a motion for a decision on the matter at the same meeting. And that is what I am asking you to do, to approve a motion tonight to make a decision regarding the C P I C resolution. I'm also asking that you vote in favor of accepting C P I C's recommendation. It is inexplicable as to why the C P I C resolution recommendation is presented as an information item. As per your own bylaws, action items and information items are specifically defined. Action items are reports requiring decision. Action items are reports requiring decision by the board. Information reports are reports that promote student success and other issues of a general nature. The item in question is a recommendation to the board and as such requires, requires a decision by the board. A decision by the board can only be rendered by way of a resolution. This is clearly outlined in the trustee code of conduct and you can refer to the slide for the specific wording. A response to C P I C is actually required by Regulation 612, the regulation, section 47 subsection two, which is provided on the next slide. A response requires a decision and a decision requires a resolution. Resolution cannot be passed for an information item without the unanimous consent of trustees, even if it is germane to the topic. The chair was very clear about this in the May 17th meeting when trustees wanted to pass a resolution regarding agenda item nine point one. A decision with regards to C P I C's recommendation only requires a majority. By presenting this as an information item, trustees are prevented from making a decision and providing a timely response to C P I C, even if eight out of nine trustees are in agreement. Placing this as an information item is preventing the board from moving forward on this matter. Ironically, the matter in question is precisely about the board responding to advisory committee recommendations. So the board is avoiding a response to an advisory committee regarding the board's obligation to provide a response to advisory committees. The resolution passed by C P I C is lengthy, but only because it provides the regulatory background. The ask is quite simple and straightforward. The recommendation is simply that when a school council makes a recommendation to the board, that the recommendation proceed as an action item on the board's agenda in order for a decision to be made and subsequently communicated back to the council. This is to ensure that the recommendation is actually dealt with and a response actually provided. Similar to the recommendation from C P I C, a response is required to be provided to school councils who make recommendations to the board. This is in section 21 of the regulation entitled duty of board to respond. And again, is provided on the slide. Again, a response is required, is required. A response requires a decision. A board decision can only be made by resolution and resolutions can only be made for action items. Not complicated, shouldn't be controversial, but somehow it has become both of those things. As a member of C P I C, I hope that you will accept C P I C's recommendation. But either way, you must provide a response. In addition to complying with the legislation, it is equally important that the board demonstrates to C P I C and to all parents and stakeholders, the trustees actually do value the feedback and recommendations of its stakeholders and especially its advisory committees. To not even provide a response would call into question whether the board values its advisory committees at all or whether these committees exist simply because they are mandated and the board is just going through the motions. No pun intended. There's no reason that this recommendation should be contentious, especially if the board does indeed value feedback from its advisory committees. But somehow it has become so. This recommendation was first by fourth for consideration to, by C P I C back in November, but it took until April for a resolution to be passed. The motion that was ultimately unanimously passed was first presented in January, at which time we also had probably the most fulsome discussion. Staff and trustees do not have voting rights on C P I C and should not be able to influence decisions by the committee. But their erroneous and confusing statements caused the motion to be delayed. And due to lack of quorum in February, it was delayed until our next meeting in April. It is mind boggling to me how it has taken another two months for the recommendation to come forward to trustees. In January, it was suggested that it was not appropriate for school councils to be making recommendations to the board. It is very troubling to hear this coming from staff and trustees. School councils are legislatively mandated and their mandate is clearly outlined in the legislation, which is provided on the next slide. Suggesting that school council should not be making recommendations to the board demonstrates a fundamental misunderstanding of the purpose of school councils. Not only is there nothing wrong with school councils making recommendations to the board, it is precisely what they should be doing. In fact, to quote the legislation, it is the quote, "primary means of achieving its purpose," end quote. And it being school council. Councils. It is also suggested that the recommended process is redundant since responding to school councils is already required. But the reason this recommendation was brought forward is because the board has failed to respond to school council recommendations in the past. The C P I C recommendation proposes a very simple, defined process that would prevent this from happening in the future. This ultimately protects the board as well by ensuring it is complying with the legislation. Also, the majority of requirements in H C D S B's current policies are taken from the legislation or ministry memos. In fact, much of the wording is verbatim. So why are those requirements coded into policy? Given the board's past failure to respond to school councils, as well as some of what we heard from staff and trustees in response to this recommendation, it is clear that this particular requirement of the regulation is not well understood at H C D S B. Putting in place a formal process would help ensure the board actually complies with the legislation. It was also suggested at the January C P I C meeting that a process was not needed as the board already has policies and procedures to address this. This delayed the motion as C P I C members then asked to be provided with the existing policy and/or procedure before voting. We were provided with eight documents totaling 49 pages, some of which were not even remotely relevant to the matter. Staff were asked to provide the specific policy or procedure that addressed the subject of the motion, but failed to do so. Particularly concerning was that staff directed members specifically to policy five dash zero nine, public concerns slash complaints process and asked members to note the role of school council as outlined in that policy. It finds it troubling that staff would refer to a public complaints policy to address recommendations from school councils. This suggests that feedback from school councils is seen negatively as a complaint. School councils or advisory committees are, and are meant to work in partnership with the board. Your feedback should not be viewed as a complaint. Also, the policy states that, quote, "Catholic school councils were established to advise principals on matters such as the school curriculum and code of student behavior." I don't think I've ever read such an erroneous description of the role of school councils and I can't believe this is stated in an approved board policy. Trustees don't even provide advice on curriculum, much less school councils. I don't know why C P I C members would be directed to this definition other than to cause confusion as to the role of school councils, which is very clearly stipulate, stipulated in the regulation, which again is outlined on the slide. Time is of the essence. There have already been significant delays in passing this resolution, resolution and bringing it forward. The board does not meet again until after the last C P I C meeting of the year on June 20th. The membership of C P I C turns over every September, so the group that will be in place for the next school year will not be the group that passed this resolution. Again, the board can only act by resolution, so tonight is the last opportunity for you to make a decision and provide a response to the appropriate C P I C membership. It's important to clarify that bringing school council or C P I C recommendations to the board as action items does not mean that the board is obliged to accept those recommendations. Although I do hope that there would be good rationale when a recommendation is not accepted. What is not acceptable, either in the legislation or just as a matter of respect and decency, is for the board to fail to respond. I've served on school councils for many years and there are many parents who serve for a year never to return because they see the process is futile and don't feel their voices being heard. That happened specifically as a result of the assumption school council's recommendation being ignored by the board last year. What kind of a message will you be sending if you don't provide a response to C P I C's recommendation? The board's Catholic School Council policy states that the Halton Catholic District School Board values the advice given by its Catholic School Councils and Catholic Parent Involvement Committee toward better learning opportunities for children and for the improved operations of its schools. If there is any truth to that statement, you will accept the recommendation from C P I C and put into place the recommended process. At the very, very least, you will provide a response to the committee before they disband for the year. Thank you.
You, Ms. Lorenko. Uh, I shall now open up the floor to trustees to ask questions based on the presentation. I have a speaker here, trustee De Rosa. You have the floor. One second, hold on. Uh, okay, go ahead, trustee De Rosa.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you, uh, and thank you, uh, Ms. Lorenko for the presentation. My question is simple. What was the recommendation from C P I C for which they're waiting an answer for?
Oh, just that, um, when a school council makes a recommendation to the board, that that recommendation, um, proceed to the board as an action item so that the board can make a decision and respond back to the committee.
Thank you, trustee De Rosa.
May I follow up?
Yes, you have three minutes, two questions. Go ahead, trustee De Rosa.
Thank you. So has there been any form of an answer at all?
No.
From the board?
No, and I don't think there can be until the board, um, you know, makes, makes, has a discussion and makes a motion, right? It has to be a board decision. So I'd be concerned if there is a response and you didn't know about it because it should, all trustees should be part of that process.
Thank you, trustee De. Ms. Lorenko. Because? Any trustees want to ask a question of our delegate? Mister, trustee Carabella, trustee Carabella, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, through you, Mrs. Lorenko. Um, did you say that this, um, motion, when you had it at the C P I C um, committee meeting, that it passed unanimously?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Carabella, your second question?
I don't have a second question. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Your Brian, you have your hand up. Trustee O'Brien on the floor.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair, to, um, Ms. Lorenko. In your delegation, the reason this recommendation was presented in the first place is because the board has failed to respond to school council recommendations in the past. Uh, can you give a, a concrete example of this?
Uh, Ms. Lorenko?
Yep, so last, I guess it was June 2021, it seems like longer ago now, but, um, June of 2021, the Assumption Catholic School Council, which I was chairing at the time, or co-chairing, um, made a recommendation to the board to, um, to address the lack of exam, uh, writing skills for our senior students and to consider, um, some ways that, that that could be addressed. Um, and we also at the time asked for the board to, to also survey other councils and parents to get their opinions on the matter. Uh, we did not receive a response. We followed up again later in June. We did not receive a response. We followed up in September, um, and, and reminded the director of his duty to report to the deputy minister if the board was not following the regulations, at which time we got a pretty quick response. Um, but unfortunately it was kind of misleading. It suggested that exams were going to be happening when they weren't. So, so that's what kind of motivated, um, you know, looking into a way to prevent this from happening in future.
Trustee O'Brien, your second question?
Thank you. Um, through Mr. Chair and Ms. Lorenko, Ms. Lorenko, do other parent involvement committees bring recommendations to their boards? And if so, how do those boards respond?
Ms. Lorenko?
Yeah, absolutely, they do. Um, so I spoke to a member of the Toronto Catholic C P I C, um, committee. And she was kind of surprised by the question because I think it, it, it's pretty straightforward. Um, and, you know, they, they make a recommendation that goes to the board. And she did say it was outlined in their C P I C and school council bylaws and procedures. I did also notice that the Toronto Catholic Board has a standing item on their agendas called Matters Recommended by Statutory Committees of the Board. And there were items under there, um, at some of the agendas I looked at from C P I C and quite a lot from C I C as well. Um, and also the Toronto District School Board, um, has a section called Committee Reports. And they have from several different committees. Their advisory committees seem to flow through other committees and then to the board. But again, it's a standing item. Um, and again, several C I C recommendations and a couple of C P I C recommendations that I saw coming through that way.
Thank you, trustee O'Brien. Thank you, uh, Ms. Lorenko. Uh, on speaker's list, we have trustee Ohan Chanada. Trustee Ohan Chanada, you have the floor.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair, Ms. Lorenko, thank you. Just a quick question. I might have missed it because our, our voice of our parents are so very important. I know it passed unanimously at C P I C. Were our councils surveyed about having the recommendations come straight to the board? Or was that through C P I C representative of the parent councils? Did they get surveyed?
Ms. Lorenko?
Uh, no, the school councils did not get surveyed. It was a, a C P I C, um, decision. Um, C P I C does support school councils, um, and support parent engagement. And again, I will just say, um, you know, I don't know why we would survey school councils because it is in the regulation like that, that the boards have to respond. And I don't know how else the board can respond without passing a resolution at, at the trustee level, which again, I don't see another way to do that other as an act, uh, other than as an action item. Even at the beginning of the meeting today, um, the chair said that, um, information items, um, can't be actioned. So, you know, there, there's no other way to comply with the regulation.
Chanada, trustee Ohan Chanada, second question?
Thank you for that.
Thank you, trustee Ohan Chanada. Thank you, uh, Ms. Lorenko. I do not see any other hand up here to ask questions. So Ms. Lorenko, I want to thank you for taking a time to prepare this delegation and come and talk to trustees. Uh, really appreciate that. A response to the delegation will be dealt with under agenda item eight point one. Thank you. We shall now move on to our final delegation and that's, uh, uh, on the S R O program at H C D S B. Uh, Mr. McCombe and Ms. Wasquez Jimenez will present. Uh, you have 10 minutes to present. Give me a second. Okay, you're ready to start. Thank you.
Good evening, trustees. My name is Ian McCombe. I am a parent within the H C D S B community and a concerned stakeholder. I have been watching meetings of this board closely and after the last few years have been growing increasingly concerned. Recently, H C D S B undertook a consultation survey regarding the S R O S L O program and its perception and effects on the H C D S B community. While the survey results clearly showed that there were issues with the current implementation, it did not seem that any of these were addressed through an equity lens and instead the board moved to re-implement the program. This was deeply concerning to me as a parent, as the board should at all times seek to represent the best interests of all of its students. As such, I reached out to Ms. Andrea Vasquez Jimenez of the organization Policing Free Schools to offer her professional opinion on the matters currently facing H C D S B.
My name is Andrea Vasquez Jimenez, gender pronouns she/her. I'm speaking today to you in my current capacity as director and principal consultant of Policing Free Schools. I support organizations, school boards, departments of education and community organizers and ending police in school programs while simultaneously moving towards the end of policing, carceral infrastructures, practices, policies and culture alongside the co-creation of transformative, healthy, equitable and life-affirming educational spaces. Part of a previous portfolio of mine, I was a lead organizer for the successful removal of the School Resource Officer S R O program in 2017 through a first of its kind, community-led and collaborative process at the Toronto District School Board, T D S B. I also hold a Masters of Education from the Ontario Institute for Studies in Education at the University of Toronto in their Social Justice Education Program. I'm speaking today in concern as to what was brought to my attention by community members. The concern is in regards to the April 19th, 2022 School Board Meetings Agenda Item Number Eight, titled Action Items Eight Point One School Liaison Officer Program in H C D S B Schools P Daily. Alongside submitted recommendations, which was voted in favor, such as the Halton Catholic District School Board lift the pause on school liaison officer program offered at H C D S B schools. Policing Free Schools alongside the organization, Parents of Black Children, who are cosigners of this letter, are present in solidarity with Halton Black Voices, Halton Parents for Change, Black Teachers Association of H C D S B, educators, parents, caregivers and students, among others in your board. We are reminding you again that lifting the pause on the S L O program instead of the removal. Sorry, my computer. Instead of the removal of this harmful program is extremely problematic and contradictory as it also goes against your own board's guiding. Seeing as the board states on your website that as H C D S B, you are, quote, "committed to creating safe, inclusive and welcoming learning environments that support student achievement and wellbeing in our Catholic schools." Human rights and equity are guiding values that are consistent both with Catholic social teaching, reaffirming the dignity of every individual, as well as the Ontario Human Rights Code, which safeguards students and staff from discrimination based on the protected grounds. Our commitment to provide ongoing opportunities to acquire the knowledge, skills, attitudes and behaviors needed to identify and eliminate discriminatory systemic barriers under the code is embedded in our equity and inclusive education policy, end quote. Uploading, upholding a lift on the pause of the S L O program is not grounded in human rights and equity. It is the contrary and goes against the Ontario Human Rights Code. As stated in your website, it's supposed to work as a protective mechanism for, quote, "students and staff from discrimination based on the protected grounds," end quote. H C D S B must recognize that having healthy, equitable policing in free schools is a public health issue, a labor issue and a union issue. They are a professional obligation and indeed a legal obligation. It is a human right. Your board has the opportunity to move forward and uphold the human right of police free schools as a first and necessary step while moving towards policing free schools. This is also a human right under the International Convention on the Elimination of All Forms This is also a human right under the International Convention on the Elimination of All Forms of Racial Discrimination. As well, equitable access to education is a human right, and structures of policing and carcerality impede this access. Impeding this human right to be upheld is an illegal obligation to ensure the removal of your police in school program and co-create the conditions to support transformative, healthy, equitable, anti-racist, anti-oppressive, and life-affirming educational spaces for all students. Anything less than this, meaning the continuation of any police in regardless of its composition, is gross negligence and ongoing human rights violation on your part. It is crucial that you be aware of the historical and equitable decision that the Toronto District School Board took in 2017, as it is related to their police in school program. The historical decision was removing their police in school program from TDSP schools. That when doing a review, they had ensured that the quote, "primary goal of the TDSP review was to capture and center the voices of those students, families, and communities" who had been excluded, marginalized, and/or discounted, end quote, page one. This equity lens that the TDSP was established upon inception of the review applied through all phases, including community consultations with partnership organizations, data analysis, decision-making, a full removal of the police in school program, and thereafter. The TDSP has shown continued courageous leadership and bold stance for equity and centering those most negatively impacted by ensuring the removal of their program and moving forward with ongoing changes along the continuum of equity to support students. If you were to have a look at the data that came out at your school board, not in isolation, but alongside others, including the TDSP, you would notice that the data is quite similar. However, the main difference is that the TDSP did not take a Eurocentric approach or lens to the data. Rather, they took an intentional equity lens and human rights approach by centering those voices and lived experiences who are being most impacted. For instance, an equity approach by the TDSP to the key findings mentioned that quote, "The collected data revealed mixed feelings about the impact of the SRO program. Many respondents had a positive impression of the program. Some had an indifferent impression. However, of significant concern are the findings that indicate negative impact and potential experience by students," end quote, page two. TDSP stayed consistent throughout in prioritizing equity and human rights, stating quote, "In the face of this data, we have a clear duty to act on behalf of our students and address the concerns they have brought to our attention. We have an obligation to ensure that all of our students can learn in schools that are safe, discrimination-free, and that protect their human rights. Although we heard from a number of respondents who supported the presence of an SRO in your school, there are also many who were unaware of the SRO program or felt unaffected by it. Our priority must be to mitigate against the differentiated and potentially discriminatory impact of the SRO program as described to us by some of our students and communities," page five, end quote. Leading to the equity and human rights-based decision making of removing the program and continuing with actionizing along the equity continuum. The HCDSB, all it needs is a political will to do right by the students who you are serving and ensure an equity lens and human rights-based approach is taken, which would ultimately lead to the decision of the removal of the SLO program and continue changes towards policing free schools. Rather than HCDSB taking on a Eurocentric approach on the data analysis and moving forward with this inequitable decision based on the data that was collected, human rights and equity must be the lens. The reality is that police in school programs, regardless of the name it goes by, such as the SLO program at your board, it entrenches the school-to-prison and deportation pipeline. These are systemic issues that the HCDSB is attempting to minimize and erase by rationalizing as to why the particular program at your board should be taken off of pause and continue. Your school board must understand that the detrimental impacts of police and policing in school are systemic. These are not isolated issues. Your police in school program isn't different. Your educational space isn't different. Your students aren't different. You are not exempt from systemic issues. It is important that you are mindful that it is essential that we do not replicate the same oppressive structures by asking for reforms, whether that be solely less police presence, more training, or more diversity in school police force, or changing them for or increase in software technological surveillance for purposes of policing. As a reminder, equity-driven, anti-oppressive, anti-racist, equitable, liberatory, and life-affirming educational spaces, wherever it may be, are not possible with police presence, policing, and criminalization in our schools. Transformative, healthy, equitable, police and policing free schools require the full removal of police in schools programs and moving towards an uprooting of all policing, carceral infrastructures, policies, practices, and culture. Once again, your board just needs the political will to create the conditions for all students to have educational spaces where they can heal and learn and inspire other educational spaces to do the same. What will your decision be? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCombe and Ms. Jimenez. I shall now open up the floor to trustees for questions, if any. Trustees, do we have questions for delegates? D. Rosa, give me a second. Let's get these done. Okay. Trustee D. Rosa, you are good to go. You have two questions in three minutes. Trustee D. Rosa.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, through you. And thank you to Mr. McCombe and Ms. Jimenez for the presentation. My understanding of this program is that it's been around for roughly 35 years or so. I've had constituents call me on it.
Rosa, can I remind all trustees to ask questions on the presentation itself?
Yes, of course. Of course, Mr. Chair. Ms. Jimenez, have we considered the possibility that, like in any program, and this one has certainly lasted 35 years, we may have experienced cases of individuals actions that are inappropriate rather than the total program itself? Are we not? Are we sure that we're not throwing out the baby with the bathwater, in other words, by eliminating the program? Because my information and my experience with the program, and some of it is quite quite direct, is that it has saved the many students, many problem students. Because the program is staffed with trained, racialized individuals who really have a specialty within the police corps. So I'm wondering whether we have considered the upside or not? That was my question.
Rosa, once again, I will remind all trustees to ask questions on the delegation itself and not talk about your personal experiences. Okay, so trustee D. Rosa, finish your question, please.
I have.
Okay.
My question.
Then I think Ms. Jimenez might want to take this, but it's up to you guys.
Yeah, thank you for that question. And so what's the heart of the issue is that this is actually a systemic issue. Once again, as stated in the presentation, this is not an isolated or a local issue. This is a systemic issue that's also present at your board. And unfortunately, many students, even educators themselves and community members, in many instances, don't feel safe enough to actually make these grievances at your board due to potential, you know, being reprimanded. And so the issue is that all police in school programs negatively impact students. And this, again, is a human rights issue provincially as well, including at your local school board.
Trustee.
I do have another question, Mr. Chair.
An answer.
So without, without this program in place, how do we handle? How do we expect to handle the legitimate cases or problem cases without this program in place? Have we given any thought to that?
Any of our delegates can answer that?
Well, we actually already have a provincial model for a local police and school board protocol. And every, you know, every school board within the province, including at your own local school board, already have your own local board protocol. And this just provides the parameters in regards to the mandated times that police do have to be called in. And police in school programs end up entrenching the school-to-prison and deportation pipeline. Also very much distinct to the already provincial model and local school board protocol that speaks to when it is mandated to contact police. So some of the main issues is the continuous underfunding and under-resourcing of our educational spaces within the past, you know, two decades, regardless of which governments are in place. So some of the interests are to best reallocate funds in a way that's equitable to support all students without actually continuing a policing, surveillancing, and criminalizing, which again is against and a violation of human rights.
Do you see any other trustees' hands up? I'll give it a second. So I see no other hands up, so I must thank Ms. Jimenez and Mr. McCombe for your presentation. A response to the delegation will be dealt with under agenda item 8.1. Thank you. Moving on to our next order of business, which is the approval of the minutes. The minutes of the May 17th, 2022 regular board meeting is in your package. Are there any errors, additions, or additions to the minutes? Seeing none, I shall ask for a move-up, please. Trustee Ohern Chanada, a second, please. Vice Chair Agnew, I shall take it to a recorded vote. Trustee D. Rosa?
Abstain.
Trustee Carabella?
Abstain.
Trustee Bowie?
In favor.
Trustee Mastri Amar?
In favor.
Trustee Tokiba? Trustee Tokiba, are you present? I didn't hear you. Okay, I'll come back there. Trustee Ohern Chanada? Vice Chair Agnew?
In favor.
Trustee Murphy?
In favor.
Trustee O'Brien has left. I'll give it a minute. Give him a minute. Trustee Tokiba, are you there?
Sorry, in favor.
Trustee O'Brien has just gone out. I shall vote on this matter. Trustee Duarte is in favor, so we have four in favor. To abstain, the motion carries. The minutes are approved. Moving on to the next next item. The minutes of the May 24th, 2022 special board meeting is in your package. Are there any errors, additions, or additions to the minutes? Seeing none, may I have a motion to approve the minutes of the May 24th, 2022 special board meeting? Trustee Ohern Chanada? I'm looking for a second. Vice Chair Agnew? Trustee O'Brien, you were
In favor.
We voted on item 6.1, minutes of May 17th meeting. You were out, and now we are talking about item 6.2, minutes of the May 24th meeting. So I shall now call the vote. Trustee, in favor. Trustee D. Rosa?
Abstain. Excuse me, Mr. Chair. Abstain.
Carabella?
Abstain.
Trustee Bowie?
Abstain.
Trustee Mastri Amar?
Abstain.
Trustee Tokiba?
Abstain.
Trustee Ohern Chanada? Trustee Vice Chair Agnew?
In favor.
Trustee Murphy?
In favor.
So we have four in favor. To abstain, the motion carries. The minutes of May 24th special board meeting are approved. Moving on to the next order of business, which is business arising from previous meeting. The summary of outstanding items for the past meetings is present in your package for your information. Moving on to the next order of business, which is action items. Response to delegations. So we have, I like to put a question to trustees. We have three similar delegations, so I'm just wondering if trustees like to combine them 5.2, 5.3, and 5.5? Would trustees like to combine them, or would you like to go individually?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, trustee D. Rosa?
Which ones did you want to combine?
It was 5.2, 5.3, and 5.5, but I'm hearing that trustees want to go individually, so we shall go individually, one by one.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. I agree.
In accordance with our board bylaws and policy I-06, delegation to the board, we have four options. And trustees may move a motion to make a decision today on this matter, defer the matter to a future meeting, or request a staff report on this matter to be considered at a future meeting. We have four delegations now, so we shall go to the first delegations. Give me a second. The first delegation is item 5.2, Black Teachers Association of HCDSB. And I shall now open up the floor to trustees to choose one of these four options. I see trustee Murphy, you have your hand up. Trustee Murphy?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to move a motion, and I've sent it to Rosie, if she or Ms. Swindon can put it up on the screen.
Okay, give it a second. Thank you, trustee Murphy. Trustee Murphy, would you like to read the motion?
Yes, be resolved that the HCDSB Board of Trustees direct the Director of Education to provide a staff report on the establishment of a committee, including recommendations, whether it be a working staff or standing committee, including a framework of measurable, deliverable results incorporating the engagement of Black stakeholders, Black external, Blacks internal stakeholder groups, and Black community liaisons for the purpose of achieving system equity for Black students and staff. The elimination of systemic anti-Black racism and other forms of anti-Black racisms to be brought to the September 20th board meeting.
Thank you, trustee Murphy. May I ask for a second?
I will second.
You have a motion. Thank you, trustee D. Rosa. We have a motion that is moved by trustee Murphy, and we have a have a second, trustee D. Rosa. We have a second, which is trustee Ohern Chanada. Trustee Murphy, since you put forth the motion, I'd like to give you five minutes to talk the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We've seen the presentations tonight that were very fulsome and directed, and as a board, we need to to be able to draw on those resources to move forward with regards to our position and the lived reality of our staff and students. We know we need, as especially coming from Milton, which is a very diverse community and getting diverse, more diverse every day, we need and want to have a board and a system that is reflective of our students, and currently, that's not the case. So we need support and assistance to get to where
Thank you, trustee. I have a speaker's list here. Trustee D. Rosa, was your hand up for this?
Yes, it was, Mr. Chair, and I'd like to invoke the point of privilege. I believe that if you look at the timing, I seconded the motion first. With all due respect to my colleague, I was first on the seconding of the motion.
When you say point of privilege, you say point of privilege and wait for the chair to recognize you. Really appreciate if trustees can understand how point of privilege is to be raised. So trustee D. Rosa, you have raised the point of privilege. Please state your point of privilege.
My point of privilege is that I'd like you to check the record because I seconded that motion ahead of my colleague, trustee Ohern Zanorta. With all due respect to her.
Thank you, trustee D. Rosa. I have it recorded that the motion was moved by trustee Murphy and seconded by Trustee Murphy and seconded by Trustee O'Hern Chanada. So that will stay, and thank you for your comment. I shall now move on down the speaker's list to Trustee O'Brien. Trustee O'Brien, you have the floor.
Thank you through, Mr. Chair, and this is a question to Trustee Murphy, just for clarification before we get strongly into the debate, just so I understand your motion. It says, for the purpose of achieving system equity for black students and black staff, the elimination of systemic anti-black racism and other forms of anti-black racism. So just so I know what it's saying, so the committee would be established for the purpose of achieving s- system equity for black students, for the purpose of elimination of systemic anti-black racism and for the purpose of any forms of anti-black racism. Is that, am I reading that right?
Uh, yes, that's correct.
Trustee Murphy? Trustee O'Brien, you have a follow-up question?
No, I'll save it for the debate. Thank you, just want to make sure no more understand the motion.
Thank you, Trustee O'Brien. On the speaker's list, we have Trustee, Vice Chair Agnew, Vice Chair Agnew, you have the floor.
Um, thank you through you, Mr. Chair, I just, um, just trying to figure out if I need a clarification here. Um, I'm okay, I'll, I'll wait. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, we have staff who'd like to comment. Mrs. Jay Ramon, uh, you have the floor.
Could you, um, thank you, and through you, the chair, I'm just, um, trying to re- sort of understand the motion, and if I may, I wanted to offer some, uh, comments on this, um, and, and maybe clarification. It's, um, you know, there's no doubt that we need to do the work to denounce and dismantle anti-black racism and central black families and students in education in a thoughtful, intentional and well-resourced way. But when we think and understand the complex and institutionalized nature of anti-black racism, um, you know, is it more than a staff report? It has to be really a whole board commitment with input from all stakeholders and departments, similar to a board strategic plan, uh, which cannot be done in a, you know, a, a, a few months, given the time where we are right now, so I'm wondering if the committee will come back with all these timelines and, and these sort of, um, measurable, deliverable results, uh, because we need to understand that, you know, we, what we're really looking for is like a, a long-term strategy, not a quick fix, um, and, you know, anti-black racism does not live in curriculum or human right or human resources or safe schools. It's really a whole board issue and needs a whole board commitment. And when I looked at stuff, um, I was thinking about other boards that have engaged in this work, like Peel in New York, they've engaged in this work, um, with the community for over a year, even two years, to come up with just the strategy that has community buy-in, that's led, uh, by, uh, you know, uh, black staff who have that lived identity and experience to relate to this work. They've established a robust steering committee engaged in community consultations. So, you know, to, we have to try and do authentic engagement with black communities and students, uh, and this is not possible over the summer, uh, and so I really ask that we get some more clarity around the timelines. Um, we also need to commit resources, staff who reflect the identity of the community that we're trying to work with. Um, and once the strategy is developed, implementation also requires resources, um, and, and, you know, boards that do this work have entire departments dedicated to anti-black racism. Um, so what I'm trying to say respectfully is, um, you know, we should try and sort of look at a long-term, multi-pronged strategy, um, and not like a sort of a quick fix, uh, because it takes time to build that trust with the community, to have a staff member leading that. So, uh, just wanted to sort of put that out for your, um, uh, for your consideration is that, you know, even calling together a committee, and I've tried to do that with a couple of other black, uh, you know, or other human rights advisory committees, it takes time and trust. So, um, I'm looking at the timelines to say, is, you know, that, is it possible to achieve this within, including the deliverables and doing a robust community stakeholders group within this time, or do we begin by establishing this committee in the fall and have the right staff in place who can then engage in an authentic commu- uh, consultation so that a, a, a good, strong strategy emerges from that?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I shall now go back to Trustee Murphy and, uh, get his opinion.
Uh, thank you, Sita, always appreciate, uh, your opinion. Um, I think the expectation is that this is the first step in the, in, it will give the board in September the opportunity to make a long-term commitment. Having said that, it's, it's no, I don't expect to have, uh, all the i's dotted and the t's crossed. So I think what my expectation would be, just as you said, the staff report would come back saying, if you want to have, um, community engagement and measurables and, and to be able to achieve these goals, here is the framework, here is the roadmap, then trustees can move, uh, a resolution to commit the board to that roadmap and framework, then the committee can get established and all of those, uh, timeframes can happen. I, what I didn't want to happen was to move a motion tonight where it was a knee-jerk reaction from an old person that looks like me, who doesn't have the expertise to provide his input. Um, so, so what the expectation is, the staff report is, just as you said, if this is your goal, this is the roadmap to get to your goal, and along that way, there's going to be turns and, and changes to direction and what have you, but really, let's give the board of trustees an opportunity to make that commitment to, um, to the end goal, and then the framework will come based on the schedule that needs to happen.
Thank you, Trustee Murphy, for providing the clarification. Uh, I shall now move down the speakers list. I have Trustee O'Hern Chanada, O'Hern Chanada, you have the floor.
Through you, Mr. Chair, and I just want to support the motion as I did by seconding it, is that this is a staff report. Um, we, we want to do everything in our power to do this timely, at the same time, um, do it right and kind of do it right the first time. So, to me, my impression of this, we're going to get a staff report of what the board needs to make this happen and make it, how they can make it happen and make it right, and make sure we're including everybody that we need to, to make this a collaborative, uh, committee with the hard targets, right? So there's not just some pie in the sky that we have some hard targets. So this is just a staff report is my impression of this motion, and then we'll look at the staff report and decide what the next steps are.
Thank you, Trustee Hon Chanada. Uh, Vice Chair Agnew, you are next, you have the floor.
Um, thank you, and through you, Mr. Chair, so I too am in full support of this motion. I, I, I do just have, I guess I need a little bit of clarity, whether that's from, um, Trustee Murphy, whether that's from, um, Sita, and I'm completely in favor of hearing from staff via a report. My, my challenge is, is, um, I know that there isn't a will to delay. My challenge is, is, you know, are we faced with a delay once we get a report back, and then we need to review the report, and then we take a look at all the recommend, that kind of thing. I'd like to see this mandate happen ASAP, um, and I'm, I'm, I'd like to know that that is going to happen. I know I'm struggling over my words, but I just want to make sure that we don't delay by putting this additional layer in. Um, and so, but I want to be fair with respect to the, the staff will be pulling this together. So, you know, I just, I guess I'm looking for confirmation that, um, we can start this work ASAP, um, that we won't be delaying this, and, um, having said all that, do we have this, do we have the staff capacity at this point to start this sooner than later? Um, so Sita, I don't know if you can answer that, I don't know if Trustee Murphy has something to put in there, but that's my only concern with respect to some of the pieces of this, of this motion.
Thank you, uh, Vice Chair Agnew. Let me go to, uh, Ms. Chair Ramon. Ms. Chairman, could you respond?
Thank you, um, and, uh, through you, Mr. Chair. So I, 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 Trustee Agnew, I think you, you make the point that I was trying to, uh, say is that, you know, we would be severely underestimating the complexity of how institutionalized anti-black racism is if we expect a quick fix and a quick turnaround and a few quick strategies that are going to fix the issue. Uh, so that's why I want some more clarity on, on what is expected, the expectation as of September twenty twenty-two. Um, so a roadmap, if that's how I understood it, and even that, given that we're in the summer, I think, you know, if, if that could have a little bit more time, is important. But the other point that I also wanted to, uh, sort of respond to that you raised in terms of staff capacity is, it's important, as I mentioned, that this work be led by staff who look like the communities that we're trying to engage. So that staff capacity is, is really important. As you know, uh, the Human Rights and Equity Office is, uh, you know, is, is looking to expand, um, starting the new academic year, we don't have anyone in place. So whether it's that or whether we can, uh, allocate resources, like I said, when I was looking at other boards, um, you know, they've engaged consultants who actually have that, can build that trust with the community, can have, have had experience in building anti-black racism strategies, um, and then again, these have taken over a year. So it's not to stall the problem or to say, well, try and postpone it, but to really, to your point about doing it in a thorough ways, that we don't underestimate the problem, we don't throw a few quick strategies at it and say, oh, it didn't work out. So, uh, staffing is really, really important, um, and acutely aware that up until the fall, there's one person in this department. Of course, it's not only my role, it is, uh, you know, like I mentioned, it's really a, like a board strategic plan, that's not done by one person. You know, we have consultants who are leading that plan, who have experience in that. So I, I, I do think that, um, you know, that resourcing is really, really important, um, so that we can get a robust plan in place, um, and, and start with the draft.
Thank you, Vice Chair Agnew, do you have a follow-up?
I do have a follow-up, thank you so much. So, I, I guess the follow-up, and I think we're very clear what the intent behind this motion is, and I do thank Trustee Murphy for bringing this motion forward. I think it's incredibly important, um, and all of the pieces that have been identified here are absolutely things that we need to have, um, you know, as part of this moving forward. Um, so understanding all of that, Sita, I mean, is the, like, in your opinion, given what you have just said, you know, what is the best way for us to act as quickly as possible in the capacity in which we can do that, to start this work, to move this forward, recognizing the other pieces that you have said? Because I, I do agree, it's going to take time to build all of this up, but we don't, definitely don't want that to be a delay. So what's the best way to sort of say, you know, starting right now, these are the different things that we can begin as part of this mandate? Um, I don't know if that makes sense, but that's where I'm kind of coming from on that, if that makes sense. Is that clear?
Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Chair. So given, uh, the existing staffing capacity for this work, uh, and, and, you know, through my, through the Human Rights and Equity Office, um, having, uh, you know, working with a consultant, consulting firm, uh, would really get us started off immediately. Um, to do that work, there are organizations that have, um, lots of expertise, uh, in this work and have worked with boards, um, and have done that work. So to me, that would be a really good and intentional and resourced way of starting, um, uh, this work in a way that is sustainable, that's multi-year, that's multifaceted.
Thank you. Moving down the speaker's list, we have Trustee Carabella. Trustee Carabella, you have the floor.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. I was just going to ask about the, um, I was going to ask about, I was remembering a motion a while back about the equity audit. Can I get some update on that and, and when we will be receiving some information from that and how it would relate to this motion?
Thank you, Trustee. Pass this on to Director Dealey, Director Dealey.
Uh, actually, I'm going to ask, um, Ms. Jay Ramon, just to give an update, because I know she talked with the, um, uh, the group we're working with today or yesterday, I think. So Sita, if you could give us just a quick update?
Um, thank you, uh, and again, through you, Mr. Chair. So I did, had reached out to the consulting firm, um, that we are working with, um, to ask when are we likely to get the first, uh, report, and they've confirmed that they've received all the documents, they're working on it, and we should be getting, uh, sort of a first, uh, report, uh, i- i- in the near future. So they haven't given us a specific timeline, but yes, uh, there was confirmation just today or yesterday, um, that, uh, they've received all the documents and are in the process of putting it together.
Thank you, Trustee Carabella, do you have a follow-up?
Well, my other part of the question was, how does that equity audit relate to this, uh, motion? The results of the equity audit with this motion. Thank you.
Chairman, would you be able to comment? I'll pass it to Director Dealey, I see his hands on the button.
Um, I, I guess I would offer, um, Trustee Carabella and tell trustees that, um, I, I do think, um, what we get back from the equity audit would inform this work. I think it talks a little bit to what Sita had mentioned about being a little bit more strategic in terms of what we want to do going forward. So there's the equity audit, there's the hiring of additional human rights staff. Uh, we've had an additional, uh, an initial meeting with Black Staff Advisory Committee, uh, last week. Um, we're finishing up, hopefully, um, an incident reporting procedure, procedure one hundred, I think it'll be, or one-on-one, uh, for responding to, um, uh, hate incidents. Uh, so that'll be ready to go for September. Uh, we are working through both the staff and student census, and all of that work is connected. Uh, if we want to start to look at disaggregated data, we need the student census data. If we want to try and match student and staff demographics, we need to align it with the staff data. Um, you know, we need to continue to look at the PD that, uh, either we can provide or provide on an ongoing basis. So I think there's elements of all this work going on, but understand that the response, if the response is, you know, we're going to get to it, that's not sufficient. Um, so I, I think it's, it's reasonable, uh, to come back in the fall and probably to update superintendents, trustees and superintendents on where we're at with those pieces and how we think they reasonably all fit together moving forward.
Thank you, uh, Director Dealey, Trustee Carabella. I hope you have your answer now. I will move down the speaker's list to, uh, Trustee Bowie. Trustee Bowie, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and through you. I think that my question echoes a lot of what has been said, but I know especially as well that there was a motion passed in September of this year for our Indigenous Human Rights and Equity roadmap that's happening on this website as well. Uh, so I don't know, Sita, if you've been involved in that work, and does this motion, do you think that the work, in your understanding, that this motion would preclude? Does that, uh, is that included in the work that you're currently doing with that?
Uh, your question is to Sita. Uh, Ms. Chairman?
Uh, yeah, thank you, and through you, Mr. Chair. So, um, you know, when we talk about, um, an equity or indigenous, uh, roadmap, uh, that is sort of equity, uh, really broadly, because equity-seeking, equity-deserving groups, it can be any number of groups. When we talk specifically of issues of systemic anti-black racism, that is a particular focus and needs its own, um, its own, uh, defined strategy and a plan. So I, while it can fall under, uh, that bigger plan, I do think it's important to, for this to be its own piece, um, and, and not be sort of, we can't make the assumption that when we talk about equity, we're automatically referring to, uh, anti-black racism, um, as its own, uh, issue as well. So, uh, and given how systemic and I, you know, how, how deep-seated the issues are, uh, there is definitely a need for a separate, um, you know, a, a strategy around that, intentionality around that, PD around that.
Thank you, Trustee Bowie, you have a follow-up?
Yes, I do. Uh, also to Sita, sorry, we're really, uh, putting you on the spot here. Uh, in terms of timelines, if you were to look at establishing an anti-black racism committee, including engaging community partners, would that be something that you would have in mind, in your understanding of where we're currently at at the board? Would that be something that could take place over the course of a school year, of two school years? Do you, do you have any sort of estimation of how long that might take?
Uh, thank you, Trustee Bowie. Uh, Ms. Chairman?
Um, thank you, and through you, Mr. Chair. Of course, it's difficult to predict exactly what kind of timelines are involved. Um, as was mentioned, we do currently have, um, you know, a Human Rights and Equity Advisory Council. While it's not focused specifically only on issues of anti-black racism, it took even for that, and it's about a eighteen-member community, uh, community of, of parents, community organizations and students. The establishment of that alone took four months, and that was a much smaller, uh, a, a sort of a much smaller committee. Um, we've got a Black Staff Advisory Committee that we just talked about, that took, uh, two months just to establish. So I'm thinking that, you know, even to establish a committee, again, I think it's important that this work is led by, uh, by individuals, um, that, that reflect the community that we're trying to engage, right? And I sort of look at myself in my own identity, in my own social location, um, and, 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 you know, I don't represent that id- identity, so it's important that we have, uh, to, we are to build that trust. We have, um, uh, you know, staff leading that, um, and that we can build that trust, and we can really invite that engagement in a way, um, that's going to be robust. So I do think it'll take, uh, you know, a few months to even establish. We already have community, uh, organizations that are focused specifically on issues of anti-black racism, already partnering. already partnering i- in different capacities with the board. So those are some of the easier go-tos for us to say, you know, can you, can you, uh, you know, be part of this, uh, this work? Um, so, but, but especially specifically with community parents, um, I think that would take, um, a little bit more. Though I must say that when we put out the call, uh, for the Human Rights and Equity Advisory Council, we got a really overwhelming response from over 100 parents, uh, and, and students. So the response has been good, but it takes time to put that in place and have a clear understanding of what the mandate of this committee is going to be. Um, so that's why I ask for, um, staff that can be dedicated to those works, so it doesn't become on the side of, uh, somebody else's work already, or this is, you know, a, a small portion of what they do, but that we really need somebody who's dedicated to just this work um, and, and, and brings that lived experience and, and identity and expertise.
Thank you. Uh, moving down the speaker's list, we have, uh, Trustee Ohan Chanada. Trustee Ohan Chanada, you're the floor.
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Chair, and thank you for the information. Um, so I really feel, and I'd like to underline and validate, that I think the date on this motion for the staff report is valid um, due to, you know, the equity audit, the, the hiring of the HR staff, the Black Staff Advisory Committees and the incident reporting, all seem to be coming together. So I just want to underline that I think the date of the staff report, um, should be in line, uh, just a comment. And I do have a question, though, that I wanted to ask earlier. Mr. Chair, may I ask it now?
Uh, yes, Trustee Ohan Chanada.
Awesome. So through you, Director Dealey or Mr. Chairman, um, we have the four steps for racism and discrimination responding with faith, hope and love. A disrupt and name, explain and support, document and ensure accountability, and reflect and restore. Um, I don't want to say quickly, because there's probably a lot the board's done, but could you just summarize what we've done so far in regards to those four steps?
Uh, Director Dealey?
Yeah, maybe I can, I can get Seda to talk about both what we've done, uh, at the board level and the school level, and, uh, maybe a little bit how that's going to inform our, our upcoming procedure as well.
Thank you, uh, and through you, Mr. Chair. So I can speak to a little bit about the protocol. So it came actually as a result of, uh, of the work of the Equity and Inclusive Education Steering Committee, which is a board-wide, um, committee, uh, composed of, of different stakeholders from across the system. Um, and this protocol came of that and was launched in February, um, uh, of last academic year. And last year alone, we had, uh, six sessions, uh, that was offered to all, and there were, uh, to, to, a variety of different staff groups. Uh, there were two that were offered to administrators, and all administrators participated in, uh, that training on responding to racism, um, and discrimination with faith, hope and love. We also worked with, uh, settlement workers, um, with, uh, you know, senior leadership, um, equity champions, um, and, uh, you know, international language, uh, teachers for that last year. Uh, this year so far, also, we've had training with, uh, you know, the CERTS, that Special Education Resource Teachers, the Group of Student Success Teams, and a number of schools. Um, and sort of this protocol and, and the way we sort of tried to scaffold the learning is to say that, you know, this needs to be ongoing learning for administrators. We've also had mandatory training, um, for all administrators at the start of the 2020-2021 academic year on navigating, navigating critical conversations on race and racism, you know, moving beyond defensiveness to genuine engagement. We've had mandatory session with all administrations on unpacking the OCT professional advisory on anti-black racism. Mandatory session, uh, on the parents of black children, a call to action, and how to address incidence of anti-black racism in schools. And that work itself builds on, uh, you know, from the 2020, uh, mandatory training for the entire system on anti-black racism, which was led by two black educators who are experts in their field. Um, and that was then, uh, you know, a session was recorded and shared with across the system. Um, and administrators got additional, uh, train-to-trainer, uh, training, so that they would then be able to participate in the first mandatory session, but also more intense training, um, so that they could facilitate the conversation, because it's also important to build the capacity of, uh, the administrators within the system, so that, you know, we, we don't always look to extra when things happen. Um, and so, you know, there's been, uh, all the PA days since then have also been dedicated to, uh, you know, introduction to, um, cultural response and well-learned pedagogy, again, by black educators, which was shared with the system. Uh, so some of that work has been done, and, uh, what we heard, uh, was, you know, yes, we have this protocol, um, you know, but, but how else can we really, uh, deepen that learning? So we created resources for both elementary school and secondary school students, uh, for teachers to be able to use with extension activities, so that we have a system-wide understanding of what it means to, uh, respond to issues through the lens of human rights equity. And in Catholic education, we also developed posters, so that people could have easy language to be able to interrupt, disrupt and support. So based on sort of two years of that work, uh, we're at the point where we are creating a, uh, procedure to respond to hate or bias-motivated incidents, so understanding what is a hate or bias-motivated incident. How do you take each of those four steps, break them down further, so that there is clear direction of what needs to happen uh, in terms of supporting? What does support look like? What does follow-up look like? So we've, uh, we've engaged with, uh, you know, um, different groups, including student trustees, including some other, uh, you know, um, stakeholder groups, our Human Rights and Equity Advisory, uh, Council, and we're looking to sort of bring forward this, uh, this procedure, uh, at the starting of this, um, August, um, the school year, or the next school year. And again, taking that to administrators to say, here is a clear guideline on how we move forward and what's our responsibility to respond to hate or bias-motivated, um, incidents.
Thank you, Trustee Ohan Chanada.
No, thank you very much for that.
Thank you. Moving down the speaker's list, we have, uh, Trustee De Rosa. Trustee De Rosa, you're the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, my question's for Seda. Um, clearly, because, clearly the timeline in this motion appears to be aggressive. Uh, I think that's what you're expressing. What is, uh, what is in this time? We have an echo. Why is that?
Trustee De Rosa, I have not heard your question. Uh, could you repeat your question?
Yeah, we were having, we still have an echo.
Is there someone?
Hello? Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. Seda, the, the timeline that's in this motion is, appears to be aggressive, based on what I hear, uh, around the table. What, what is the timeline that you're, you would be more comfortable with?
Um, do I have the floor, Mr. Chair?
Yes, uh, Mr. Chairman, you can, uh, if you, if you would like to answer the question.
Um, thank, thank the question, I think, to, Mr. Chair. So I was just thinking, we're, um...
Technical problems.
Uh, Trustee De Rosa, if you could turn off your mic, please?
Okay.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, would you like to continue?
Thank you. Uh, even coming back to a good, um, roadmap of what that process would be, look, look like, and not about sort of, uh, you know, not about my comfort, I think about knowing how can we do a thorough, uh, full sum, uh, you know, and strategizing, um, I would appreciate, uh, more time, not to delay the process, not to kick it down the road. But I think, you know, for us to, to have even sort of, I, I, and again, this is, this is a board commitment. So we need input from, um, you know, uh, from everybody, even in terms of what that roadmap would look like, uh, and some consultation. Um, I, I, I think it's, it's, it's important that, you know, I would appreciate having a little bit more time not to delay the process, uh, given that we're entering the summer month.
Thank you. Trustee De Rosa, do you have a follow-up question?
Yes, I do. So, taking a chance, what is the best guess date that we can replace that September 20th with?
De Rosa, you heard, uh, the, the answer from, uh, from Mr. Chairman. So if you want to suggest some change, it's up to you now. So do you, do you want to make a change to the date, Trustee De Rosa? You would have to propose an amendment, if at all you want to do that.
Okay, I was hoping to take direction from Seda, but I will, um, attempt to give an appropriate, a little bit more time by changing that date to November 30th.
Okay, so we are looking at an amendment here. Trustee De Rosa, November 30th is not a board meeting. Would you like to?
Uh, well, let's say the, the last board meeting in November.
It's a new, uh, new board, board of trustees, so it would have to be the first, first meeting in November.
Okay.
So... Uh, Vice Chair Agnew, you can make a suggestion if you would like to.
How about, um, Trustee De Rosa, would you entertain the first meeting in October?
Yeah, the, I certainly would entertain your suggestion, uh, Vice Chair Agnew, but it really doesn't give very much more time. Um, you know, because it's September 20th, first meeting in October, you know, it's right around the corner. So, uh, we might as well leave it the way it is, because it's not going to afford the amount of time I'm hearing that is required for this exercise. So, uh, you know, the first, November 1st is too early. Um, then the next meeting in November, uh, would be a good, uh, I'd be comfortable with that.
Meeting in November is with the new Board of Trustees and...
I understand. I understand. I'm hopeful that we will all be back.
Yes, also, Trustee De Rosa, um, uh, the meeting in November, the first meeting, that would be out of order, because you're probably giving, you're giving a direction to do something which is not in, in our capacity.
That's a very valid point. So what's the last possible meeting date that's available to us?
November 1st. So, Trustee De Rosa, you have November 1st up there. Would you like to propose an amendment?
Yes.
Okay, so this is an amendment moved by Trustee De Rosa, and, um, I will need a second for that.
Seconded, O'Brien.
Seconded by Trustee O'Brien. Trustee De Rosa, you would like to speak to that? You have three minutes, five minutes?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I'm, uh, I'm just, this is really motivated by trying to afford an appropriate amount of time, um, to take the direction of Seda, who, who I believe is recommending, uh, to having enough time to do some fulsome, uh, work and not to rush it. So this is my motivation for this change, Mr. Chair. That's it? Mr. Chair? I'm done. Can't hear you.
Yes, Trustee De Rosa, the boardroom was muted. So do you have any other comment on this? There's no other speaker. Should I take it to a vote? Trustee De Rosa, can you hear me?
Some, somehow I got muted, but yes, take it to a vote, Mr. Chair.
So we have an amendment to the motion on item 5.2, moved by Trustee De Rosa, seconded by Trustee O'Brien. Uh, Trustee De Rosa, how do you vote?
In favor.
Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Trustee Bowie?
Opposed.
Trustee Masti Amar?
In favor.
Trustee Tokiba?
Opposed.
Uh, Trustee Ohan Chanada? Trustee Vice Chair Agnew?
Opposed.
Trustee Murphy?
Opposed.
Trustee O'Brien?
In fa- in favor.
Trustee, uh, Trustee Duarte is opposed. So we have three in favor and four opposed. The amendment fails. We are back to the main motion now. Uh, so we, we have a couple of hands up there. Trustee De Rosa, I'm assuming your hand is for the previous amendment, so are you, do you want?
It is, Mr. Chair. It is, it is.
Thank you. Uh, I shall now move down the speaker's list to Trustee Murphy. Trustee Murphy, you're the floor.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you to Seda, what resources would you need to be able to bring the report back to us in October?
Mr. Chairman, you're the floor.
Thank you, and through you, um, Mr. Chair. So as I was mentioning earlier, it's important to have, uh, a consultant who can, who's had some experience, who can sort of speak to a road, roadmap that's robust. Um, so having that kind of resource would be really helpful.
Thank you, Trustee Murphy. Do you have a follow-up question?
Yes. A consultant, uh, then you would be comfortable, uh, being able to bring the report back to either the 3rd or the 17th?
Uh, Mr. Chairman?
Or sorry, the 4th or the 18th would be.
Mr. Chairman?
Of October.
Um, uh, through you, Mr. Chair, um, uh, yes, I will try my best for the 18th, or for the 4th or 18th.
Thank you, Trustee Murphy.
Okay.
To answer the question?
So then I would propose a friendly amendment that, uh, we insert, uh, hire a consultant to support the staff report and change the date to, um, to October 18th.
Director Dealey, would you have? Do you have any question? Okay, so, Trustee Murphy, you have an amendment to the main motion. Vice Chair Agnew seconded. Trustee Murphy, you have, uh...
Uh, I propose it as a friendly amendment. If there's no objections, um, then we can continue with the discussion. If there is an objection, then we can take it to a vote.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, uh, Trustee De Rosa, on the speaker's list, uh, we have Vice Chair Agnew. Would you like to speak to this?
Mr. Chair, we need a, a response if there is any objections, because if there are objections, then I'll have to move it as an amendment, and it would need a second.
Sorry, I thought this was an amendment.
I do object.
One second, Trustee, uh, Vice, Trustee Carabella, hold on.
Mr. Chair, it's a friendly amendment. I think I should be given the opportunity to speak on that.
Is that what you wanted to say in your?
Uh, no, so we would be hiring an external consultant to assist in the staff report.
So, be corrected, please? Does that look okay now?
Mr. Chair?
Trustee De Rosa, trustee De Rosa, we are working on, uh, correcting this. Give me a second.
Yep.
Direct the director of education to hire an external consultant to assist in providing a staff report. And Mr. Chair, I'll move that as an amendment and ask for a second. There's no point going to a friendly.
I think that's a better way to do it, trustee Murphy. Okay, let's read the entire motion now. Trustee Murphy.
Mr. Chair?
De Rosa, back to you. Your hand is up there and I'll come back to you. We're trying to fix this motion.
This is, this is no longer a friendly am- uh, motion. Is that the case? If I heard trustee Murphy?
Trustee De Rosa, there is a point of order here. Uh, when a point of order is raised, all trustees will be quiet and listen to, uh, the point of order being raised. Uh, trustee Ohan Chanada, could you state your point of order?
Yes, my point of order is our bylaw 10.5, authority to speak. I wish if we could follow this bylaw and any member desiring to speak shall indicate by upraised hand and await recognition by the chair. Speakers may speak when recognized by the chair and may not speak to the issue again until all of the trustees. So if we could please comply, I would appreciate it.
Thank you, trustee Ohan Chanada. Your point of order is valid. It's an order. Uh, trustees are reminded that, that they will speak only when the turn comes up and the chair gives them the flow. Uh, trustee Murphy, at the moment, does, how does it look?
Uh, that looks good.
Okay, so we have an amendment put forth by trustee Murphy, seconded by Vice Chair Agnew. Trustee Murphy, would you like to talk to that? Your five minutes?
Uh, just to say that, um, you know, it's important that we recognize and understand, um, the demands that are on our, um, on Seda and our equity department and, and we're at a time where we're going to be adding a lot of staff and there's uh, a lot of change. So, um, we are cognizant that, um, there is a certain amount of urgency on this matter, but, but obviously we, we still have to be, um, uh, to go to provide the, the required steps needed, uh, to do this right the first time. So I think this is a, a reasonable compromise.
Thank you, trustee Murphy. On the speakers list, we have Vice Chair Agnew, trustee Bowie and trustee De Rosa. Uh, Vice Chair Agnew, you have the floor.
Uh, thank you through you, Mr. Chair. So just to echo what trustee Murphy said, um, you know, we certainly want to, um, get across the importance and the, um, the urgency of having this work started, uh, but recognizing as well the bandwidth of our staff, recognizing the bandwidth of that department, and if we can provide, um, the appropriate resources in order for Seda to, um, embark on this, I think that's extremely important. We want to make sure that we do this right and we do it right from the very beginning. Um, so I'll be supporting that. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Agnew. Trustee Bowie, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and through you. Um, I won't be voting in favor of this amendment or of the motion as a whole. I think that hiring a consultant and getting this put forward in this timeline is unrealistic. And I understand that there are extenuating circumstances that are motivating this urgency and I understand the need for it. However, I think that we're just doing a disservice to our students and our staff by rushing this through. Um, so I won't be voting in favor of this, and I think that we need to have a long-term, uh, plan for working forward on anti-black racism, and I think that that's the best road for our students. I think that rushing this through at this point is not realistic nor will it lead to the best work being done. So, thank you.
Thank you, trustee Bowie. Trustee De Rosa, trustee De Rosa, you have the floor.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, just, please clarify me that we're no longer dealing with a friendly amendment. Is that correct?
Trustee De Rosa, this is not a friendly amendment. It's an amendment which.
Thank you. Thank you. I just want to make sure we're on the same page. So, um, the first thing that comes to mind is for the case of gain, gaining two extra weeks, how much am I spending to do that? We don't have that answer tonight. And frankly, I want to re- reiterate, uh, the previous speaker's, um, sentiments is that I, I get the feeling that we're rushing, we're rushing through this very, very important, uh, process to try to generate same, something by October the 18th, uh, which is going to cost money, which I have no idea how much it is yet. Um, so I won't be supporting thi- this amendment for those reasons and not for the objective of it. Okay, thank you.
De Rosa, you, Ohan Chanada, you have the floor?
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Chair. So I just, um, to trustee Murphy, I'm adding the external consultant as I heard the gentleman speak. It's important. So I don't know how else to say it, but say it out loud. So we are going to give the directive of education autonomy to hire a consultant. We're not going to get involved in that, correct? Because if we get involved in that, it's going to delay it anymore. Is that the intention of this?
Trustee Murphy, would you like to respond?
Uh, yes, so the intention is that the director of education, uh, and I don't want to put words into his mouth. I'm assuming he's going to be working with, uh, with our equity and inclusion departments and, and Seda to, to find the right candidate. Um, but that is the intention is that, uh, the directive is that, um, uh, for him to hire the consultant, to oversee the process.
Thank you, trustee Ohan Chanada. You have a follow-up?
I do, and thank you through you, Mr. Chair. I just want to stay tuned. I mean, a lot, and I understand people's perspectives that rushing, I mean, we're rushing to get a report of what they need to make this work. So I, I think we can collaborate and meet in the middle, but I don't think we're rushing to create the committee ASAP. Again, I want to reiterate, we want to do this right the first time, um, just to get the staff report. I don't mean just, please, I'm not minimizing what everyone does at the board. It's just the staff report of what they need to make this right, and that includes a large breadth of individuals and community groups and, and everything. So I, I just really wanted to restate that. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Ohan Chanada. Trustee Carabella, you're up next. Trustee Carabella, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I do want to inquire about the cost of a consultant. I think, uh, somebody could give us an estimate. And is that consultant, um, is this for a year? Um, just what is the, uh, expectations? And the second question I have is, um, well, generally, we should, we must have this, um, procedures at our board for suggesting consultants, extra staff, and, um, concerned we're not following our procedures. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Carabella. Uh, if she's got some idea, uh, Director Daly, Director Daly?
Yeah, um, just to be clear, the, the way that I, I'm reading the motion is the consultant would be assisting us in getting to October 18th. So I don't think we're looking at a year-long commitment, uh, as an external consultant. It would be on a contract. So it's not like hiring uh, an FTE staff member, uh, in terms of what that might cost. Uh, trustee Carabella, I, I couldn't hazard a guess. Um, so, so I, I don't want to, you know, kind of mislead trustees one way or the other, but it wouldn't be a, a permanent staff hire. It'd be somebody to help, uh, in a kind of a, you know, an aggressive timeline to make sure that we can bring something back that's meaningful by October.
Thank you, Director Daly. Trustee Carabella, do you have a follow-up?
Um, well, I guess I would be thinking that something like that would have to present itself in the budget. Um, so anyways, those are my thoughts. Thank you.
De Rosa, do you have anything new to add to this discuss?
Well, um, I think, I think we have the internal competence through Seda to be able to manage this process. I think we have to listen to her that the timelines are aggressive. And frankly, to authorize a, a consultant, uh, for which we don't know what the costs are and to gain two weeks' worth of value doesn't mean, doesn't seem good economics to me. So I won't be, I won't be supporting it, uh, Mr. Chair.
So I do not see any other hands up. We have this amendment by trustee Murphy, seconded by Vice Chair Agnew. I shall now, uh, call the vote on this amendment. Uh, trustee Carabella? How do you vote? Trustee Carabella, are you there?
Oh, Mr. Chair, I had an internet issue. I just heard you call my name, but that's all. I'm. I'm opposed. Opposed?
Uh, trustee Bowie?
Opposed.
Uh, trustee Mastri Amar? Trustee Tokiba? Trustee Tokiba?
Sorry, is it? Okay, sorry, opposed.
Uh, trustee Ohan Chanada? Vice Chair Agnew?
In favor.
Trustee Murphy?
In favor.
Trustee O'Brien?
Opposed.
Trustee De Rosa?
Opposed.
And trustee Duarte is in favor. It's four in favor, three opposed. The amendment carries. Uh, we shall now move on to the main motion as amended.
A point of order. Can you give me the count again?
Sorry?
Can you give that count again? You said four in favor and three opposed.
Yes, it's four in favor. Uh, we have trustee Ohan Chanada in favor, trust Vice Chair Agnew, trustee Murphy and trustee Duarte is in favor. Opposed, the trustee O'Brien, trustee De Rosa and trustee Carabella. So four in favor and three opposed.
Thank you.
Thank you. We shall now move on to the main motion as amended. So trustees, you see the amended motion in front of you, which is moved by trustee Murphy, seconded by trustee Ohan Chanada. I do not see any hands up, so I will ask trustee Murphy to close discussions on this and then I'll call the vote. Trustee Murphy, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, yes, it's, it's a big task or monumental task in front of us, but all journeys have to start with the first step. So our, our alternative tonight was to sit here and do nothing, receive it as information and say, we really should do something. Or we have an opportunity to do something and set the stage for the future of who we want to be. Do we want to live our Catholic faith? Do we want to make sure that there's equal opportunity for all? Um, so this is our opportunity to start moving forward. The, there is no rush. This, this is, we're asking for a framework that will allow trustees to commit direction and resources. That's it. It's as simple as that. If the report comes back, more time is needed, more resources are needed, whatever the case may be, then that's the opportunity for the board of trustees to have that debate and make that decision. The time for sitting on our hands is over. Let's be people of action. Let's move in the right direction and let's live our Catholic faith. It's as simple as that. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Murphy, and with that, I shall call the vote. Trustee Ohan Chanada? Trustee Vice Chair Agnew?
In favor.
Trustee Murphy?
In favor.
Trustee O'Brien?
Opposed.
Trustee De Rosa?
Opposed.
Carabella?
Opposed.
Bowie?
Opposed.
Trustee Mastri Amar?
In favor.
Trustee Toki-
Opposed.
And, uh, trustee Duarte is in favor. It is four in favor, three opposed. The motion carries. So we have dealt with item 5.2. So trustees, we have to move on to the next delegation. The next delegation is 5.3, Equity at HCSB, Alton Parents for Change and Alton Black Voices. Trustees, you have four options. First option, make a decision today. Defer the matter to a future meeting. Request a staff report on this matter to be considered in a future meeting and to receive the delegations, the delegational information. So I shall now open up the floor to trustees. I see trustee O'Brien, you have your hands up. Trustee O'Brien, how would you like to proceed?
I would like to move to take this as, this delegation as information.
So trustee O'Brien moves that we accept this as information. Trustee O'Brien, may I have a second?
Carabella?
Yeah, trustee, seconded trustee Carabella. Uh, is there any discussion on this? Saying none, I shall call the vote on 5.2 being as information. Sorry, 5.3, I didn't circle this. Okay, Vice Chair Agnew?
Uh, sorry, that was for the next item, Mr. Chair.
So, uh, I, I called the vote.
Yeah, that says it for the next item.
The vote on 5.3, so.
Right, and my hand up wasn't for that. It was for the next item. Sorry.
Point of order, point of order?
Down again. I hit it too quickly.
Trustees, trustees, we are now, we are now voting on item 5.3. Uh, there is a motion to accept it as information, moved by trustee O'Brien and seconded by trustee Murphy. I have called the vote and Vice Chair Agnew, how do you vote?
I am, uh, in favor, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Trustee Murphy?
In favor.
Trustee O'Brien?
In favor.
Trustee De Rosa?
In favor.
Carabella?
In favor.
Trustee Bowie?
In favor.
Trustee Mastri Amar?
In favor.
Trustee Tokiba?
In favor.
Uh, trustee Ohan Chanada? You have six in, opposed, non-abstained. The motion carries. Item is accepted as information. We are now moving on to item 5.4, which is the advisory authority of school councils and duty of the board to respond. I see a couple of hands up there. So we have four options. Make a decision today, defer the matter to a future meeting and request a staff report or receive the delegation as information. Uh, trustee Carabella, you have your hand up. What would you like to do?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to move a motion. Um, I'd like to move that we accept the CPIC recommendation of the April 6, 2022 CPIC resolution entitled, quote, advisory authority of school councils and the duty of the board to respond.
I will second, Mr. Chair.
I can send it to Rosie.
Yes, please. Uh, you have a motion there? We have a second. Uh, trustee De Rosa, you second it?
Yes, I do, Mr. Chair.
Let the motion put up, please. Who's working on this, Ms. Wyndham or Rosie?
I did send it, so I hope that somebody received it. I sent it to Rosie.
Okay. Okay, we got.
Thank you.
De Rosa?
Yes.
Trustee Carabella, does that look accurate?
Yeah, I think it's just the one, they had the one recommendation, which is, so, um, to accept the CPIC recommendation of the April. Oh, they called it a CPIC resolution, to accept the CPIC resolution of the April 6, 2022 resolution. Hmm, and they called their resolution, quote, um, yes, advisory authority of school councils and duty to resp- and duty and duty of board to respond.
This is privilege.
Yes, trustee O'Brien?
Um, could we have that motion put up since really that's what we're voting?
So trustee O'Brien, uh, that's not really a point of privilege. Trustee Carabella has put forth a motion here and we are talking about this motion. Trustee Carabella has put forth a motion here, and we are talking about this motion. So, uh, we, we shall go as per what trustee Carabella has put forth. There are four options here, and we've got to choose one of them, and trustee Carabella has exercised her rights to go with one of the options, so we shall stick to that. Okay, thank you. So trustee Carabella, you have the motion up here, is that the motion that you're looking for?
Yes.
Thank you. So trustee Carabella, you have, uh, five minutes to open up discussion. The floor is yours.
Thank you so much. Um, the, the motion is in the appendix to the delegation, and also later on in our board package, it is presented as an information item. So we have, um, that right before us, and plus we've had the delegation explaining in detail the, um, the, everything behind this motion, how it happened, why it's important. Um, I did wanted to stress, um, that it's, it was unanimous by the CPIC committee to bring this, to bring this resolution forward. So I think that's very important. It's, and this resolution is a vehicle to bring recommendations to the board, and it would help to say how to bring those recommendations, um, as action items. And we would be fulfilling a regul- regulation requirement and, and our duty to respond to, um, rec- recommendations from CPIC. Um, and I think out of respect for the CPIC members who put this together and voted on it, um, that they should see the fruits of their efforts, and that we, we vote on it, it doesn't, um, be, on this board meeting, so that we can, uh, give them a response, which they're hoping for on their meeting on Monday night on June twentieth, uh, just before the end of the school year. Next year, there would be new CPIC members, so it is an opportunity to respond and respect, um, the timelines for the current CPIC board. And I think, um, I think that it, it really is just a vehicle that trustees then res- respond to their resolutions. It is not precluding that we will accept all the resolutions, but it means that it'll come to our board, um, as Ms. Larenko pointed out in other school boards' agenda, it's even listed as a topic, recommendations. And I think it will help to inspire CPIC and school councils to, uh, through CPIC, to also bring forward, um, more recommendations, um, resolutions for us, and it would engage, uh, them much more in, in the, in the board. So I'm really excited about that, and I really hope that, uh, my fellow trustees are able to, uh, vote on this motion tonight and accept it tonight, uh, vote in favor, and for going forward for CPIC to start fresh, uh, next year in September, um, with, with this, uh, in place. Thank you.
Carabella, I shall- Uh, on the speakers list, uh, trustee O'Brien and Vice Chair Agnew, trustee O'Brien, you have the floor.
Thank you, three, Mr. Chair. Um, I'm looking at the actual motion here, and it does echo what trustee Carabella says. It, it is not looking for agreement, it is looking for, uh, response. As a matter of fact, it's not even looking for a explanation of response. Um, presently, Regulation six one two in the Education Act does say the board needs to respond to parent councils. Um, this was quoted in the delegation, and it's quoted again here in this motion from CPIC. So at present, we really are not following a regulation in the Ed Act. Again, it does not ask for, um, concurrence with the, with the, uh, recommendation or even explanation. Matter of fact, legally, you could just give one word, N O, and you would be fulfilling your obligation. So I think we need to at least do this, I, I'm not saying we have to do anything more. So I think it is a recommendation that will at least cover us legally. And at this point, I, I would support it for that reason only, but I wouldn't want to do anything more, because I just think we should need to be covered legally, and that's it right now. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, trustee O'Brien, on the speakers list, Vice Chair Agnew and trustee De Rosa, Vice Chair Agnew, you have the floor.
Uh, great, thank you, um, thank you and through you, Mr. Chair. Um, so I absolutely, um, think it's imperative that we address this. I think it's important that it has come from CPIC. We want to, um, definitely acknowledge, um, the role of our advisory committees that sat on school council for a really long time, they have wonderful things to say, and they do have some excellent recommendations, I think we would want to hear. Um, you know, the only piece I wonder here is, um, in order for us to, um, to make sure we're doing this the right way, um, I wonder if, you know, perhaps the route to take with this would be, um, to have this referred to our policy meeting and determine, um, at that point, you know, what needs to happen in order for us to make sure that these recommendations or these pieces that come from our advisory committees are actually going through the right, um, steps to get to the board. Um, and so, uh, you know, I think if it comes to policy, we could have a conversation, look at the policies, look at the procedure, um, and just make sure that we're doing it the right way to bring these things forward. So, you know, that would be, um, something that I would, you know, be interested in, um, taking a look at. Just a comment before I go any further.
Thank you, Vice Chair Agnew. Uh. I, I shall now move on down the speakers list to-
I, well, I'll do a follow-up if no one has any, I didn't know if trustee Carabella wanted to respond back to that, since it is her motion.
I could, thank you, if the chair allows me.
Would you like to respond, trustee Carabella?
Certainly, I think that, uh, we've seen that you can, uh, make a motion, and then it goes to the committee and gets, uh, to the policy committee and gets, um, inserted into a policy. That shouldn't really be a problem, and it could, at that point, also be expanded, or, you know, other, other points can be brought up for discussion to make sure. Uh, I think this is bringing to light, uh, the importance of, uh, of this motion about CPIC, that their resolution. Um, I think maybe they felt, uh, I don't know, maybe they felt that they weren't, um, being addressed, so they brought this forward, so I just want to respect that, and we can work with that in our policy committee.
Thank you. Uh, Vice Chair Agnew, would you like to comment?
Yeah, I mean, I just think that there's a couple of different pieces here, right? So, so recognizing what our, what was brought forward, um, as part of the delegation about how this has landed on agendas, um, at other boards, and so how would that happen? Would that need to be a change to our bylaws? Would that need to be a change to, um, you know, the way our agenda is set forward? I think that there's other questions there, and I just want to ensure that if this is going to be a piece that we are going to have moving forward, um, if we're going to be receiving recommendations and reviewing those at the board table, that we're making sure that we have all the steps in place to do that. And so like I said, that could be, there might be some procedures attached to that, how are we handling it from an agenda perspective? I think there's other pieces there that, um, need to be considered to make sure that the process, that there is a process to follow in order to have this accomplished, and I think that that is best served happening, um, by, by referring this to policy. So that would be my position on this right now.
Thank you, Vice Chair Agnew. On the speakers list, trustee De Rosa and trustee O'Brien. Trustee De Rosa?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, I'll, I'll be brief. I, um, the first thing that comes to mind when, when I look at this issue is, um, this is a key way to listen to our constituents, our most important constituents, and those are the parents. So, uh, I'm quite frankly surprised that, that this issue even exists. Um, so, uh, what they've been asking, what the delegation asked tonight, is that they get at least a response. I'm not too sure whether the policy, uh, whether all issues will, uh, demand, uh, routing to policy. I guess we'll have to see that as we, as we move forward. I think the point is very valid, uh, but I'm not too sure that all of the issues would have to take that route. Um, but first and foremost, we have to listen to our parents, uh, the parents committees who represent them, the recommendations they come up with. Um, and I'm quite surprised why this is even being discussed. So I'll be supporting this, thank you.
Uh, thank you. Uh, I heard a point of order, Vice Chair Agnew?
Well, I just don't think we should be commenting on why this is being discussed. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, uh, Vice Chair Agnew. Uh, your point of order is accepted. Uh, moving down the speakers list, we have, uh, I shall jump to trustee Ohan Chanara, because she has not spoken, trustee Ohan Chanara, you have the floor.
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Chair, and trustee Agnew, thank you for bringing that up, because I guess my question is to, I guess trustee Carabella, um, this, this action item to move forward, the delegation to make a resolution tonight at the board meeting, has not been in policy at all, I believe, a- and those are our guiding principles, me being on council for years as well, we would look to the policies to see what our actions are, what our responsibilities- It hasn't gone there yet? Okay.
Thank you, do you have a follow-up question?
I do. Um, I hear the CPIC resolution, I did ask a question whether all the school councils have been surveyed, and the answer was no. So, uh, might be an unpopular opinion, but at this point, I need more fulsome discussion to whether I think that is a frugal, um, resolution that needs to be passed. So I do personally need more time, like at a policy committee, to have that healthy debate and go through the policy and procedures to make sure we're not missing something else. So I would support that.
Uh, thank you, trustee Ohan Chanara. Uh, moving down the speakers list, we have, uh, trustee Murphy has not spoken before, trustee Murphy, you have the floor.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, yeah, I think there's, uh, trustee O'Brien made a very valid point. The ask of the presentation was to give a response, I think we have to be focused on that, and the, the motion in front of us doesn't state that. Uh, the other element is, um, is, um, Ms. Larenko brought up a very interesting point, is that in the agenda of other boards, they have, uh, a, a position held for, uh, resolutions from other committees. So that's something, since we're going through our bylaw review, that's something that I think we should bring to our next, uh, discussion. And, and we've had that discussion about other items too, where do we bring in items that trustees want, just want to discuss, so, and we don't have a, a place for that in our agenda either. So, so I think that's, we'll bring that to our next, um, our next bylaw review meeting, and we can have that discussion. I think, uh, to, uh, to trustee Agnew's point and trustee Ohan Chanara's point, there's questions I have on, you know, that I think we need to discuss in policy. For example, if, uh, a school council comes up with a resolution, but the school principal's against it, does it still come? Does it have to get filtered through the school principal, be approved, and then sent to us? So there are, I think, uh, a lot of, of those types of, um, discussions we need to have. So I would like to see it, uh, discussed in policy, but we will bring, uh, bring part of that to the bylaw review committee as putting in, uh, changing our agenda setup.
Thank you, trustee Murphy. Uh, we have a list of, uh, speakers now, I'm just wondering if you have something new to add? Trustee O'Brien, anything new to add?
Mr. Chair?
Uh, trustee Carabella?
Am I on the list? Because I'd like to add something new, but am I on the list?
So I have trustee O'Brien, who's got the floor right now, and then I'll come to you, trustee O'Brien.
Thank you, three, Mr. Chair, I, and there's something new. Um, I agree with trustee, um, I do, there are, Vice Chair, I do, there are moving parts in this, so there are a lot of parts in this. Um, for example, um, this, and this is a response to Mr. Larenko's delegation. Mr. Larenko does bring up, um, section forty-seven as well, under Regulation six one two, saying that the board also must respond to the, the, the board shall inform the parent involvement committee of its response to advice provided to it by the committee. So not only is there a legal obligation to respond to parent councils, there's also a legal obligation to respond to CPIC. And, um, presently, we don't have anything in place to do that, and that is not mentioned in, um, this motion at all. So there is more than one piece for sure. So I, I would be very open to a policy. At the same time, there is a, um, an urgency in the fact that we are not legally covered. I, and I don't want to be a precursor to that if we're not following the Education Act right at this moment, but we, we aren't. Um, and I appreciate the fact that we could go for stakeholder feedback, but it's like, right now, we, we're not covered. So I, I am going to support this, but I know there's, there's more that has to be done, so that both those legal pieces are covered. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, trustee O'Brien. Trustee Carabella, you're going to close this thing, would you like to, uh?
No, thank you, I'd like to make an amendment. I'd like to make an amendment, um, that be it further resolved. Be it further resolved that, um, this, whatever, this, this, um, this resolution, be it further resolved that this resolution, uh, go to the policy committee to, uh, to go to the policy committee for further, uh, for further, um, implementation, something like that. If somebody can help me if they like, um, want to express that, um, I'm listening to what everyone is saying, so we can ac- accept the, um, accept the resolution, and accept also bring it to the policy committee then to flesh it out more. So, um, if, be it further resolved that this resolution be, be then, be then referred to the, uh, policy committee for further review, yes, thank you, for further review and implementation. Thank you.
Carabella? Put the motion, uh, moved by trustee Car- for a second, please.
I will second it.
Trustee O'Brien seconded it, trustee Carabella, would you like to speak to this, or should I take this to vote?
I think it's, um, everything that everyone has said and how I just, um, explained the amendment, we're good to go to the vote, thank you.
Thank you. I shall now call the- Oh, yes, sure, sure, sorry. Uh, on the speakers list, we have, uh, Vice Chair Agnew and trustee De Rosa, Vice Chair Agnew?
Thank you very much through you, Mr. Chair. So I appreciate that, trustee Carabella, that, um, you're listening to some of the feedback around the table. I would suggest however, that I believe that, that in no disrespect at all, I think that that is actually, uh, perhaps backwards. Um, you know, I think before we can accept that CPIC resolution, um, that it actually needs to go to policy first, so that we can get all of that information, and then upon that, um, then it can be, um, dealt with. So I do think it needs to go to policy first. I would, it, you know, if, if we're looking to keep both of these pieces here, um, I would actually suggest, and I can make an amendment to that fact, but I actually would suggest that that be flipped, so be it resolved that this resolution be referred to a policy, and then be it further resolved that, um, you know, upon, I'm not going to be able to get that wording right, but upon, um, you know, discussion, um, et cetera, et cetera, at the policy meeting, that the, the motion come back, something to that effect. Again, I don't have the wording, but I think that those two pieces need to be flipped.
So, Vice Chair Agnew, are you? Amendment or-
So- Oh, do you want to go? Sorry, one second.
A point of order?
Uh, trustee Carabella, you have a point of order?
Well, were she dealing with, um, mine, maybe she's speaking to the motion, but, or speaking to the amendment, um, but it doesn't have to go that way. I mean, we've, we've, it wasn't recommended like that from, at the CPIC, and, um, it can certainly go this way. It means that we're agreeing with CPIC's recommendation, and we will put it into effect. I don't think you have to go to policy first.
Thank you, trustee, thank you, trustee Carabella, I've not heard your point of order.
Well, the point of order is we have to vote on, on my amendment.
Trustee, trustee Carabella, your point of order is not, uh, not valid. Uh, just hold on, I need to, hold on one second. Uh, Parliament, Kapur, uh, would you, would you be able to- Parliamentarian Kapoor, would you, would you be able to speak to your suggestion?
Yes, Chair, and good evening. The most direct way of doing what Trustee Agnew suggested would be to take the motion as it currently stands, motion as originally written with the pending amendment and refer the entire motion to the policy committee. A motion to refer this to the policy committee can have a date and, and further instructions, but that would be the most direct and straightforward way to, to, to do what Trustee Agnew expressed was her wish.
Thank you, Parliamentarian Kapoor. Vice Chair Agnew, what would you?
Yeah, so I'd like to make an amendment. I wanted to make sure that I was doing it the, the right way. So Parliament, Parliamentarian Kapoor, if you could just assist, as you had just sort of stated with what that wording would look like, understanding what it is I'm trying to refer.
With your permission, Chair?
Yes, Parliamentarian Kapoor, go ahead.
The basic motion would be to refer this motion to the policy committee.
To refer which motion, Parliamentarian Kapoor?
The motion that's currently in front of the board, which is the motion with the first clause and the pending amendment. So all of that would be referred to the policy committee. It is at your, would be at your discretion as to whether you wish to put in a report back date and any further instructions. But the basic motion is to refer this to the part, to the policy.
Thank you, Parliamentarian Kapoor. Vice Chair Agnew?
Yeah, I mean, I'm for that and I'm sorry if I'm struggling here with the wording. I want to make sure I'm doing it the right way, but that's the intent behind it, is to send this to the policy meeting.
So a suggestion here could be, trustees is we just vote on the motion as it exists and then come back to the, come back to the four items that we need to do and then refer to policy. That's another option that, that we can do now. So. Okay, Parliament Kapoor?
One of, referring it to policy committee directly is not one of the, is not necessarily one, not one of the four options in your, in your bylaw. So you, you've got a proposed response and that can be referred to policy committee.
Got it. Thank you. So?
The basic motion would be, Trustee Agnew would be to move, to refer this to the policy committee.
Vice Chair Agnew?
Yeah, so I would like to move this, to refer to the policy committee.
Thank you. We have a motion in front of us. Be it resolved that the board of trustees refer the CPIC resolution to the policy committee, moved by Vice Chair Agnew. I'm looking for a second, please. Seconded by Trustee Ohan Chenada. Vice Chair Agnew, you would like to speak to this?
I don't need to speak to it, Mr. Chair. I've spoken to it already this evening. Thank you so much.
Sorry, Chair. At, at the risk of, at the risk of laboring the point, I would recommend that the motion, blue, read, be it resolved that the board of trustees refer, refer the above motion to the policy committee.
Thank you. Would trustees be okay with that?
No. So this is a, this is an amendment to the main motion?
Yes, this is.
It's not an amendment to the main motion. It's a direction to refer the main motion to the policy committee.
Okay. I'm going to say no. And I
Parliamentarian Kapoor, this is a
Point of privilege. Can we speak to this motion?
Carabella, it's not a point of privilege. I'm just trying to get something straight here with Parliamentarian Kapoor. So Parliamentarian Kapoor, this is an amendment to the amendment right now. No? So it's just an amendment?
It is not an amendment at all.
Okay.
You have currently in front of you a motion.
Yep.
And you have currently in front of you a proposed amendment to that motion.
Okay.
What you are now doing here is referring the entire motion and the amendment, referring that whole thing to the, to policy committee. That's what you're, that's what the proposal is. It's not an amendment. It's referring the entire matter as it currently stands, which is the words in black font, to the
Policy.
Yes.
Thank you. So trustees, are we clear on this? So we are going to be voting?
Is it, is it debatable?
Trustee O'Brien has a question. Parliamentarian Kapoor, is this still debatable? Like, believe like all motions, this is debatable.
It is debatable, requires a majority vote, and the debate should be limited to the merits of referring or not.
Sounds good. Yes, I'm coming off of the list. So Trustee De Rosa, you have your hand up. Do you want to talk to?
Yes. I will not be supporting this motion, Mr. Chair, because it seems to me that we are referring an item to a policy which is actually in law for us to follow. So I don't understand why policy gets precedence over a motion that seeks to make us compliant with the law. So I won't be, I won't be supporting this. Thank you.
Trustee O'Brien, you have your hand. Are you speaking to this?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Trustee O'Brien.
I, I totally agree that this should go to policy. Absolutely. No question about it. However, I guess it's just me. I, I do have a bit of an obsession with, with not breaking the law. And even though it's the Education Act, right now, we're breaking it. So to me, there's an urgency and there's a chance to do something about that right now. So that's where my priority is over everything. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Trustee Bowie, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have a question to whoever can answer me. Could we, so since this is being referred to policy, my question is, since this is discussing CPIC, would this be proposed as an, would it be an amendment to the policy I-23, which is the CPIC Policy Act Policy Committee? And if so, should that be included in the motion?
I'm not sure we need to incorporate that in, into the motion. It could take a variety of forms. It could either be a new policy, the policy committee decides it, or it could be an amendment to the existing policy there. So it's up to the policy committee to decide.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Ohan Chenada, you have the floor.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. Just a quick comment. When I went through policy I-23 requirements under Catholic school councils and CPIC, and the regulations, et cetera, et cetera, it does say to make recommendations to the principal of the school or to the board, but it, it really doesn't state what to do with it. That's why I think it's really important, albeit I'm hearing about breaking the regulations, to get it to policy as soon as possible and to deal with what do we do it, do with it at this point. So it's the first bullet point under requirements under policy I-23. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Ohan Chenada. Moving on, we have Trustee Carabella. Trustee Carabella, you have the floor.
Thank you. Precisely, it was in, if it's in the policy and then it didn't get followed. So this is important that it is a law, it's a regulation. I agree with Trustee De Rosa and Trustee O'Brien. It's something we can do right now. I mean, we don't feel the effects of it right now because the year is finished. It's going to be next year, so we have time to support the motion and now and send it to, to the policy as well. Not that we have to, to refer it to the policy meeting without approving and respecting the unanimous decision of the CPIC members.
Trustee Carabella? So we have the motion in front of us, moved by Vice Chair Agnew, seconded by Trustee Ohan Chenada. Vice Chair Agnew, you get to close and then we'll take it to a vote.
Thank you very much and through you, Mr. Chair. You know, contrary to some of the comments, it certainly is not being done at all in any disrespect whatsoever. As I said, I've sat on school council for a number of years. I sit in an advisory committee through CAC. I very much, very much appreciate and encourage the voice of parents, our councils, our advisory committees. I'm a strong advocate for that. I just want to make sure that if this is going to come forward, that we take the proper steps, that we make sure that there is, that we are attaching this to the appropriate place, that there's procedure put in place so that in the event that this does happen or when we do see this come forward, that there are no obstacles or barriers put in place to make sure that this goes through as smoothly as possible. So when we do have a council bring something forward, or we do have an advisory committee bring something forward, that they're not met with any resistance or any barriers into having that recommendation or resolution put forward for consideration. So that's my intent of putting that there and I would hope that we could support that, that piece. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Vice Chair Agnew. I shall now call the vote. Vice Chair Agnew?
I in favor.
Trustee Murphy?
In favor.
Trustee O'Brien?
Opposed.
Trustee De Rosa?
I'm opposed.
Trustee Carabella?
Opposed.
In favor.
Trustee Mastri Amar? Trustee Tokiba?
In favor.
Sorry, I did not hear that.
In favor.
Trustee Ohan Chenada? And Trustee Duarte is in favor. We have four in favor, three opposed. The motion carries. The motion that we see in front of us will go to policy. Moving on, sorry, Parliamentarian Kapoor, we do not have to deal with the other stuff, right? The other amendments that were there?
No, no. Amendment has been referred to the committee along with the rest of the motion.
Thank you, thank you.
I have a point of clarification. Just a point of clarification. Is it going to the next policy meeting?
I believe so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Trustees, we are now moving on to the last delegation. That's the item 5.5, SRO programs at HCDSB. Trustees have four options right now. Make a decision today on this matter, defer the matter to a future meeting, request a staff report or receive the delegation of, as information. I see one hand up. Trustee O'Brien. Trustee O'Brien, what do you propose to do?
I move that we take this delegation as information.
So Trustee O'Brien moves that we accept this as information. May I have a second there?
Carabella?
Seconded by Trustee Carabella. Trusted, do we have any discussion? Seeing none, I shall call the vote on accepting 5.4, sorry, 5.5 as information. Trustee Murphy?
In favor.
Trustee O'Brien?
In favor.
Trustee De Rosa?
In favor.
Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Bowie?
In favor.
Trustee Mastri Amar?
In favor.
Trustee Tokiba?
In favor.
Trustee Ohan Chenada? Vice Chair Agnew?
Opposed.
We have four in favor, two opposed. The motion carried, carries. Item 5.5 is received as information. Thank you, trustees, for the discussion. Moving on to the next order of business, and that's the item 8.2, which is the 2021-22 Year End Planning Report from the external Superintendent Loft, would you like to speak to the report before I read the motion, Superintendent Loft?
Certainly, Mr. Chair. And through you, Attaches Deloitte's Year End Audit Plan for 2122. Lillian Chung, she's our audit partner from Deloitte, presented this to the audit committee at the May 26 meeting, where it was unanimously approved. This will be Deloitte's first audit with us. Mr. Chair, I believe, actually, I was going to ask if you want me to read the motion, but I believe you mentioned that you were going to read the motion, so.
Yes, Superintendent Loft, I can gladly read the motion. Be it resolved that the Holden Catholic District School Board approved the external auditors for 2021-22 Year End Audit Planning Report. I shall now ask for a mover.
I will move.
May I have a second there?
I second.
Trustee De Rosa. Trustees, any discussions, any questions? Trustee O'Brien, I see your hand up there. Is it for something that in the past? Okay. Thank you. Trustees, any other question? Seeing none, I shall call the vote on the motion in front of us, moved by Trustee Murphy, seconded by Trustee De Rosa. Trustee Rosa?
In favor. In favor.
Sorry, sorry. In favor.
Trustee Bowie?
In favor.
Trustee Mastri Amar?
In favor.
Trustee Tokiba?
In favor.
Trustee Ohan Chenada? Vice Chair Agnew?
In favor.
Trustee Murphy?
In favor.
Trustee O'Brien?
In favor.
We have six in favor, none opposed. Motion carries. We shall now move on to the next order of business, which is the proposed 2022 Assumption Secondary School Action. Superintendent Merrick, read this report before I read the motion. Superintendent Merrick?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and through you. This report is as presented at the May 17th board meeting and we have one resolution for trustee consideration, which would authorize staff to proceed with the project as well as expense up to $375,000 for the project from available capital sources.
Thank you, Superintendent Merrick. I shall now read the motion. Be it resolved that the Holden Catholic District School Board authorized staff to proceed with the proposed dust collection system replacement project at Assumption Catholic Secondary School and authorized staff to expense funds from available capital funding and the capital reserves for the proposed project and that the project expenditure will not exceed $375,000. May I ask for a mover and a second piece?
I will move.
By Trustee Ohan Chenada, second?
I will move. Seconder.
Trustee, trustees, any questions for Superintendent Merrick? Any discussion? Seeing none, I shall call the vote on item 8.3, proposed 2022 Assumption Catholic Secondary School Dust Collection System, moved by Trustee Ohan Chenada and seconded by Trustee De Rosa. Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Trustee Bowie?
In favor.
Trustee Mastri Amar? Trustee Tokiba?
In favor.
Trustee Ohan Chenada? Vice Chair Agnew?
In favor.
Trustee Murphy?
In favor.
Trustee O'Brien?
In favor.
Trustee De Rosa?
In favor.
We have six in favor, none opposed, none, no tensions. Motion carries. Moving on down to the next action item that we have, upholding the sanctity of life in fundraising services at the Holden Catholic District School Board contraception. The following is a notice of motion from the May 17th, 2022 regular board meeting. Trustee Carabella, please read the motion.
I have a point of order. Chair?
Vice Chair Agnew, your point of order. Please state your point of order.
Yeah, so my point of order actually is that this motion does not comply with Ontario Regulation 612 in the Education Act and therefore it is not in order and cannot be considered.
Trustee, Vice Chair Agnew, I think we have to the motion and then have a point of order on it because we do not, let me check with Parliamentarian Kapoor. Parliamentarian Kapoor, do we have to read the motion and then have a point of order or?
Yes, unless, if the motion is, unless it's possible that Trustee Carabella may move a motion that is slightly different from the one that's in the notice, but still within scope of notice.
Right. Right.
So until she reads it.
Right, so.
That's fine.
Vice Chair Agnew? Yes, so I think the motion needs to be read precisely, and then, before it is moved and seconded, we have the floor to read your motion.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Okay. Upholding the sanctity of life in fundraising services at the Halton Catholic District School Board contraception. Whereas in Halton, on average, five babies are killed through procured abortion each day. Whereas some birth control, such as the IUD and the pill, cause abortions. And whereas abortions by birth control are the taking of an innocent life, a violation of human dignity and a crime against humanity. Whereas Human Evite states, quote, "The direct interruption of the generative process already begun, and above all, directly willed and procured abortion, even if for therapeutic reasons, are to be absolutely excluded as illicit means of regulating birth," end quote. Whereas the Church condemns, and has always condemned, the use of contraception as intrinsically evil in the vademecum of confessors. Be it resolved that the Halton Catholic District School Board, because it is a Catholic institution, will not provide or facilitate any fundraising services through any of its schools and head office to register charities and nonprofits, including their subsidiaries, affiliates, and associates, that in any way are involved, are involved in, or support abortifacient birth control through advocacy, programs, finance, or material support.
Sorry, trustee Carabella. Thank you for reading the motion. There is a point of order on the on the motion as stated. So Vice Chair Agnew, can you state the point of order?
Yes, for sure. So my point of order is that the motion does not comply with OREG 612. Therefore, it is not in order and cannot be considered.
Could you specify, Vice Chair, which part of the, which subsection?
Me for one moment. I absolutely can do that. So. Sorry, let me just find it here. Okay, so OREG 612/OO, school councils and parent involvement committees under Education Act RSO 1990(c.e.2).
Thank you, Vice Chair. I'm going to need a few minutes to look at this, so I'm going to ask trustee at ease while I take a look at the.
Mister Chair, could there be an explanation along that, then just re?
Trustee Carabella, the point of order which is raised, the chair has to rule on that point of order and then we'll move on. So for that, I need to read the OREG, and I need to, for that, I need to talk to the parliament and discuss a few things, and then I'll come back. So for the minute, for the moment, I'm going to ask all trustees to stand at ease for a few minutes, and then I'll come back. Thank you. For your patients. I had taken a look at the OREG 612/OO. School councils, one second, school councils and parent involvement committees. 19.1 states that in addition to other obligations, to solicit the views of school councils under the act, every board shall solicit the views of the school councils established by the board with respect to the following matters. Number four says policies and guidelines respecting the fundraising activities of school councils. So the point of order is well taken. If the motion was adopted, it would change policy without the steps required by the regulation. Therefore, the motion is not in order and cannot be considered. So trustees, we will have to move.
I'd like to appeal that.
Trustee Carabella? So Carabella, you have raised an appeal.
Am I allowed to speak to the appeal? Because this is, this is not just fundraising. This is our tenants of our faith. We have denominational rights. We can.
Carabella, you can appeal, and then we'll take it. Okay, so I'll need a second. First, appeal moved by trustee Carabella. I'm going to ask for a second, please. Seconded, seconded by trustee O'Brien. I have to take this to a recorded vote. There's no debate. Thank you. Trustee Ohan Chanada, have you heard? Are you in favor of the appeal or opposed to the?
I'm opposed to the appeal.
Vice Chair Agnew?
I'm opposed to the appeal.
Trustee Murphy?
Opposed.
Trustee O'Brien?
In favor.
Trustee De Rosa?
In favor.
Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Trustee Bowie?
Opposed.
Trustee Mastri Amar?
Opposed.
Trustee Tokiba?
Opposed.
And trustee Duarte is opposed. So you have three in favor, and you have four opposed. The appeal fails, which means that the motion is out of order, which means that we will now move on to the next order of business. Order of business, trustees, is the staff reports. 9.1, supporting our diverse school communities. Superintendent Nar, please present the highlights of.
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Chair. I'm pleased to share with you the outline of the training initiatives that have been completed over the course of this school year for all employees on the Catholic social teaching on loving and accompanying students who identify as 2SLGBTQIA+ and on the denominational rights and responsibilities of students and staff under the Human Rights Code. As well, the report in your package also provides an update on the ongoing partnership and participation of community organizations who have a specific focus on 2SLGBTQIA+ resources and supports. This continues to be important work for us to be doing in our system and aligns with each of our strategic priorities and our Catholic social teachings, as I've outlined in the report. So building on the training that was provided for principals in the fall of 2021, all staff have now been inserviced or will be by the end of the next two weeks in supporting students and their families. The training was provided through a theological, a pastoral, a human rights and equity, and a mental health and well-being lens. In order to inform the training that focused on mental health and well-being of students, members of our committee worked with staff from the Positive Space Network to facilitate a focus group with our staff and students who are currently involved in the GSAs from each of our high schools. The focus group used a listening circle format for students to share their experiences and discuss the development of the staff training. This feedback was then used to create a training session that was provided to the system that focused on the well-being of students in the 2SLGBTQIA+ community. As the students gathered together from across the high schools, they expressed interest in coming together more regularly. So a second session then took place with the student groups that was facilitated by the Get Real movement at the end of May, with all 10 high schools participating. The focus of that session was on building community, 2SLGBTQIA+ joy, excellence, and resilience. A third session has now been scheduled for June 20. It will be facilitated with staff from the Positive Space Network. And our goal for the 2223 school year is for the groups to come together and meet monthly, virtually, and have each one of the 10 high schools take turns in hosting those meetings. As far as partnerships goes, the report also outlines the dialogue, work, and the ongoing plans that have taken place with some of our community partners. As previously mentioned, the committee's worked with staff at the Positive Space Network, which is affiliated with Rock, known as the Reach Out Center for Kids. This work with this organization centered on gathering the experiences of students and families in the 2SLGBTQIA+ community to inform and create pieces of the training provided. As well, a meeting has taken place with the Canadian Centre for Gender and Sexual Diversity to explore opportunities for collaboration for the upcoming academic year. Some of those plans include the development of onboarding modules for new and current staff, a workshop series for parents for supporting students, practical classroom-centered reference tools for staff to support students that can be added to the toolkit that had been created last year and that we continue to update over the course of this year. So for our next steps, the steering committee will continue to work on supporting 2SLGBTQIA+ staff, students, and their families through dialogue, inservicing, and the provision of resources to ensure that our schools and workplaces are safe, inclusive, and welcoming environments of learning that are reflective of our Catholic social teachings. Training of staff will continue in the 2223 school year, while we will focus on going deeper into understanding the complex and changing needs of persons in our school communities and to create an environment where people listen and learn from each other about 2SLGBTQIA+ identities and the varied intersectionalities that exist. Onboarding of new staff will include training modules as well, and we will continue to offer ways for staff to engage in deeper learning in conversation and numerous opportunities that will include adult faith formation offerings and various leadership development opportunities. It's important we continue to both inform our staff training and to ensure our workplaces are safe and inclusive spaces through listening to the stories and experiences of staff who are members or allies of the community as well. An invitation will go out to staff who are members of the 2SLGBTQIA+ community to participate in a staff-focused and advisory group. And as well, we will be looking at ways in the fall in which we can assess the impact of the work that we've been doing over the course of this year and gather feedback on the continued needs that need to be addressed as we continue our focus on supporting students and staff in the 2SLGBTQIA+ community. Our staff are our biggest asset, and this work with our staff is really important in helping us to ensure that all of our student and community members know that they belong in our school communities and can achieve to the greatest potential and see themselves in the image of God. So I'm happy to answer any questions that anyone may have about the training or the report.
Trustees, we have questions here. Vice Chair Agnew, you have your hands up.
Thank you very much, and through you, Mr. Chair. So no questions. Thank you very much, Superintendent Nar. It's wonderful to see the work that's being done, the magnitude of the staff involvement, the different departments that are working together, the different initiatives that are coming forward. It's wonderful and very encouraging to see the participation with our community organizations, people with lived experience who are able to offer that lens. And I really, really look forward in the fall to getting that feedback and that assessment piece. I would love, I mean, you know, we hope it's making a difference. We really do. It'll be wonderful to actually hear if, you know, if these different initiatives for education and training, et cetera, are making a difference and what impact they are having. So thank you very much for all of the work. I'm very encouraged by everything that's been done. So thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Trustee O'Brien, you're up next. You're the floor. Trustee O'Brien?
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair, to Superintendent Nar. Superintendent Nar, thank you for a very comprehensive report. Looking forward to it. You picked some excellent presenters for this, ones with a lot of theological background. Father Conal Mahoney, vicar of education, Father Darren Diaz, another person with excellent theological training, which really complements our journey in this being distinctly Catholic. I'm just wondering about some of the other presenters mentioned. I can't think of their names off the top of my head. Do they have any theological background in this area?
Superintendent Nar?
Sure. So some of the presenters did not, or at least not that I'm aware of. So they would have been selected because of their area of expertise. So for example, we had a human rights lawyer presenting, because part of our focus was on human rights and our legal rights and responsibilities. So I'm not aware, they may have some theological training, but that was not necessarily their portion of it. When we did the training in the fall with our administrators. When we did the training in the fall with our administrators, we had it set up as a, um, a panel discussion. So all four presenters, uh, two with a theological, theological background along with, um, a participant from the Positive Space Network and the human rights lawyer, um, they all presented together. And then, uh, the dialogue between the four of them continued as well. So, um, I think it was a nice mix of having all of the perspectives that needed to be there, grounded in our faith.
Trustee Ohan Janata, trustee Ohan.
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Chair, Superintendent Nar. Superintendent Nar, the only thing I can think of when I read this report and reflect on this report is a phrase that comes to me, "We've come a long way, baby." And we sure have in the last couple of years and will continue to move forward, I'm sure. And I'm very proud to be part of the Halton Catholic District School Board over the past few years and, you know, decrease and make sure that every, every staff, every child feels lovable and seen. So thank you very much to everybody involved in all of this. And really, you've come a long way, baby.
We have a good team that worked on it. Thank you.
All the speakers on the list, so Superintendent Nar, thank you so much for the work that you've done in your report. We shall now move on to the next order of business, which is nine point two, staff reports, 202223 Business Estimates Draft. Trustee O'Brien has indicated a conflict of interest here. Superintendent Loft, please present the highlights of your report. Superintendent Loft.
Oh, let me turn the camera on, sorry. Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. Please find the draft of the 2223 budget estimates. Adam Cross, our Senior Manager of Financial Services, and I would like to discuss the draft budget using a presentation. So you can see, we have it up on the screen right now. So we can see that we're going to, what we're going to look at today is our budget challenges, our estimated revenues, our estimated expenses, the COVID-19 revenues and expenses, program enhancements, and new initiatives, as well as an updated board financial statement and our next steps. So looking at our ongoing challenges, what we've experienced through COVID-19, declining enrollment for the first time in a number of years, which has had a negative impact on our GSN revenue. Again, our enrollment is tied directly to how much funding we receive from the ministry. A decrease in enrollment will result in a decrease in our revenue to the board. Another challenge we have, especially in the last few years, is the enrollment projections. So where we, where we projected we would be at this point in time is a lot, um, higher than what we're seeing right now. And the reason for that has been COVID-19. It's impacted a lot of boards in Southern Ontario, the GTA especially. So it makes it extremely difficult to project what our enrollment will be, given that a lot of the criteria used in the past really isn't valid anymore. Another ongoing challenge we have, especially in the last year or so, is inflationary pressures. So as we know, inflation is a real, uh, item for all of us. We're looking at between five and six percent right now, as well as looking at a couple more projected, uh, rate increases throughout the year. So that is a concern that we have as a board, is dealing with those inflationary pressures. We also have, as most years, we have a cost associated with employee absenteeism, as well as infrastructure pressures. So we have, uh, growth demands in the north and facilities. And our facilities, as we all know, are still in really good condition, testament to Superintendent Merrick and his team. But as we get further and further along and our average age of our facility gets older and older, um, increasing the renewal of these facilities is extremely important. Safeguarding data and technology, uh, I'm not going to say it's new because it's not new, but it definitely has, uh, been more relevant the last few years or so. So really safeguarding our data as well as our technologies become more and more important, um, given that the need to, um, or the reliance, I should say, on technology is always increasing. And obviously, with that comes an increase in our technological costs. So the technology that we have, uh, we've had in the past year or so, a record number of devices purchased for our system. Now the challenge will be keeping those devices and planning to renew those devices. Another challenge, and it's pandemic related, um, is the unknown factors around COVID-19. What's the fall going to look like? Are there new strands coming? Right now, we're heading into the summer period, which historically has been less of a concern for viruses and such. But as we move into the fall, the concern with, uh, with winter and the flu and, and any kind of variants could be a concern as well. We just don't know, it's an unknown right now. It's a challenge. So our enrollment, so we talked about this at, uh, the last meeting or so. And we're looking at our enrollment year over year. So on the secondary side, we're showing a slight increase. Last year, we were about thirteen, uh, thirteen thousand one hundred, and now we're looking at about thirteen thousand four hundred eighty-eight students. The elementary panel, uh, it's stagnant. So we've rolled it forward. What we had last year is what we're showing for this year. Again, if a change occurs, we will adjust that at the revised estimates. And we'll see where we're at in October to see what our enrollment numbers forecast out for the year. But for right now, to be conservative, we've kept it the same. So I'm going to hand it over right now to Adam, who's going to look at the estimated revenue for the upcoming year as well as the expenses. Adam?
Thanks, Aaron. So this slide aligns our major revenue streams for the 20222023 school year budget. You'll notice at the bottom there, we have an increase of nine point six million or roughly two point eleven percent. The large majority of that increase is in our GSN allocation, and this is due to the slight increase in enrollment that Aaron just talked, talked about, as well as the movement of some of our other grants into the GSN. So our PPS moving into the GSN specifically around mental health. The COVID-19 learning recovery, recovery funds are actually included in the GSN rather than a PPF this year, as well as some others like broadband network connectivity and capacity. The other increase to the GSN is due to an increase in our teacher qualification and experience allocation compared to the prior year, uh, as well as, uh, continued support from the ministry for centrally negotiated collective agreements. Our PPS are down, uh, again, due to the COVID funding for this year being moved into the GSN. There's a decrease in, in our PPS that, uh, slightly offsets the increase in GSN. So looking at our expenses for 20222023, the, this slide shows all our school expenses or classroom instruction as well as our school supports or school admin, our coordinators and consultants in continuing education. So from a classroom instruction perspective, we're, we're showing a decrease of $4 million or 1.26% decrease compared to last year. This is largely driven by a reduction in the number of FTE for classroom teachers due to our enrollment projections kind of staying stagnant and also due to the reduced COVID-19 funding. So last year, we had about six million in a projected deficit due to maintaining lower class sizes as a result of the continued pandemic and the continued support, uh, from the government. So this year, we've kind of right-sized and, and gone back to our normal sort of pre-pandemic, uh, staffing. In terms of our occasional teachers, so we've increased our occasional teachers slightly this year based on our historical trending that we've seen over the last few years, including the pandemic years. Uh, some of the other areas to highlight, so again, due to our lower projected kindergarten, we, we're seeing a reduction in our ECE, our early childhood educators' costs, as well as a decrease in textbook and classroom supplies, again, due to, uh, due to a decrease in kind of instructional materials. We're seeing a reduction in the need for textbook purchases, moving to more digital, uh, resources, as well as we saw some decrease in furniture and equipment costs. Looking at our, uh, school support services, so our school administration has increased. And this is, uh, due to a couple of things. The first one being an increase in the salary benchmark for principals and vice principals, uh, as provided by the ministry, and as well as an increase in our clerical staff for the additional seven point five office assistants that were presented to the Board of Trustees, uh, at the May 2nd meeting and then again at the May 17th board meeting. And you'll see that, uh, later in the presentation. Our continuing education, uh, there's an increase in our continuing education, and that's just, uh, the byproduct of us recognizing the ESL, uh, costs as well as the revenue in our original estimates this year. Last year, we waited, uh, until the announcement of the funding from, uh, from the province. Looking at our non-school costs, so board admin and governance has increased 800,000. This is, uh, due to a couple of reasons, an increase in some software costs, some grid movement for staff that fall under board admin governance, or board admin, sorry, uh, as well as, uh, the human, uh, resource and our human rights positions that were proposed to the, the Board of Trustees on the May 2nd and May 17th board meetings. Our transportation costs have, uh, increased, um, by 154,000. The, the key kind of thing to, to highlight with transportation is that we are expecting, uh, to exceed our funding allocation by roughly 1.8 million dollars this year. So our revenue came in at nine and, uh, we're at 10 point or almost 11 million dollars for transportation costs this year. Looking at our school operations, so we have an increase in general repairs, hydro and electrical rates, as well as a slight decrease due to a reduction in custodial supplies for COVID-19. In terms of our other people accommodation, so there's two components to this. There's our, uh, interest on our debt repayments. So every year, our principal balance decreases. So we'll see a decrease in our debt repayments as well as our, uh, temporary accommodation is lower for 20222023 as a result of moving, uh, St. Kateri into a school board-owned property rather than leasing the space that we are currently doing for 22, 2122. The other items on here, so our non-operating expenses. So this reflects some of that, uh, COVID-19, uh, learning recovery funding. So within our other non-operating expenses, we're reflecting the de-streaming of grade nine costs, uh, as well as, uh, increase in certs and other spec ed needs that we'll talk about, uh, later in the presentation. And then in the contingencies, so this is where the province has requested that we include, uh, a collective agreement benchmark provision, uh, for labor that they provided in their funding to the board for this year. It should be noted that you also see an increase, an equal increase in school-generated funds and school-generated fund, uh, revenue. So the revenues and expenses this year, so net neutral for those of, of no impact to the overall budget, but you will see the increase in revenue going from seven million to nine million. And then, uh, the corresponding increase in expenses going from again, seven million to nine million. And then the last piece is our amortization. So amortization expense is higher due to the board having more tangible capital assets for 20222023. So this slide highlights our COVID costs. So this year, our funding is, uh, 5.3 million. So that's down from the seven million that it was last year. And, uh, included in here are classroom teacher costs, occasional teacher costs, uh, as well as some, uh, other expenses related to operating a virtual secondary and a virtual elementary school this year. And then again, in the provisions for contingencies, there's 1.5 million, and that addresses some of the needs for de-streaming and, uh, special education.
So I'm going to, uh, take over for a little bit from Adam. So thank you, Adam. Everyone, this is the system needs for 2223. I know we had a, a consultation earlier in the year where we discussed some of these, um, in detail, but we've kind of organized them now based on funded. So we found the funding within the, the budget right now, whether it be from existing budget or from additional, um, funding from the ministry relating to these programs. So the first item that we have is the, the staffing reporting compliance manager. That's been funded with reallocation of existing budget. We have a few IT services positions. So we have an IT computer technician of a point three. We also have a student information system analyst, as well as an IT network analyst. Now, there was additional funding from the ministry for network, broadband network, which Adam talked about earlier. So that allowed us to kind of free up some additional money, uh, in order to fund these positions. The next two items we have are 12 ET, or 12 FTE educational assistance. So this is the result of some of our COVID funding that we received from the ministry. We received, uh, COVIDs, uh, as well as it can be used for spec ed needs. It can be used for, um, de-streaming, uh, the de-streaming incoming in the fall, all those type of items. So the 12 FTE for educational assistance is higher than we initially talked about earlier, uh, in the year. Uh, I think before it was around five, and we've looked at it and we've come back. And I think we can, uh, we've allocated 12 as well as the CYCs. So the Child and Youth Counselors, initially, we were looking at around two. But again, going back and looking at that funding, we're coming back and presenting to trustees, uh, an additional five staffing needs. So, uh, the funded elements of our, our budget are about 1.3 million as related, uh, and as seen here. So our next slide is similar. It's non-staffing program enhancement. So these are not staffing, um, elements. There's no FTE attached to it, but it definitely is a program enhancement to an existing program that we have. So we mentioned before the de-streaming PD. So de-streaming that's coming, uh, or expanding, I guess not. It's already had happened this, uh, year, but we're expanding it or the ministry's expanding it in the fall. So that PD, uh, that 145,000 goes along with, uh, doing the professional development relating to that de-streaming. We also have about 20,000 for a de-streaming grade nine math textbook. We have about almost 300,000 or so relating to mythology, digital licenses for grade one to six students, as well as some resources for the French as a second language de-streaming in grade nine of about 50,000. In addition, we have anti-black racism of about 50,000, again, uh, for professional development. Another item that we had, and it seems small, but it has a big impact, is ECE or Early Childhood Educated Mentorship Program. There was a need for 9,000. We've allocated that there, as well as an ebook collection. So there's been 10,000 allocated to have an ebook collection, or expand upon our ebook collection for the fall. Now, the next slide is another program enhancement slide. So again, it's, it's another enhancing of an existing program, but it does relate to staff. So the first item here is for an administrative assistant, uh, which will be split between the Privacy and Record Information Management Department as well as Director's Office. As, and we also have a point five, uh, FTE, a full-time equivalent FSL itinerant, increasing that as well too, from a point five to a 1.0. So that point five is increasing a current point five to a 1.0. The last item are new initiatives. So these are new, um, initiatives for the board or new programs for the board. So early reading support is a, a big one coming out of the, out of the pandemic. It's, it's a requirement for, for our system. And we've allocated 136,000, uh, for that new initiative. Professional development for early childhood educators, a relatively small amount again, but it's, uh, 9,000. The STEAM program, we've allocated about 165,000 for the program implementation expansion of the STEAM program, as well as about 58 or 60,000 or so for Indigenous education and human rights professional development. This last slide is actually new initiatives that have a staffing component attached to it. So you see the first few that are listed on our list are the human rights positions that were added back in the, at the April 5th, 2022 regular board meeting. So there's the four positions there that were added. We also have a human resource equity officer, uh, as well from the Human Resource Department, um, a health and safety officer in the Human Resource Department. And this last item here is 7.5 FTE for school office assistance. So what this is, everyone, is this is for schools that have a single administrator and a single secretary. So it's going to be a point five office assistant to help those schools out. We, we've noticed, especially in the pandemic and coming out of the pandemic, the need for additional help within the schools. And this hopefully will go along the ways to. And this hopefully will go along the ways to succeed in that. So I'm going to hand it back over to, actually, no, sorry, I'll look at this one, and then Adam will look at the next couple of slides. So everyone, so at the end of the year, at the end of twenty-two, twenty-three, what are we looking at for a budget? Well, right now, we're looking at a surplus or an operating surplus, a small one of about two hundred and seventy thousand dollars. So we're looking at at the end of next year, based on our estimates right now, of about two hundred and seventy thousand dollars. If our enrollment is higher in the fall, we obviously will have to make those adjustments and bring back another revised estimates, an adjustment to both our revenue and our expenditures at that point in time. But as it stands right now, what we're estimating for the end of next year, twenty-two, twenty-three, is a small surplus, of operating surplus. And now I want to hand it back to Adam to kind of go through the explanation of approved capital. Adam?
Thanks, Aaron. So yeah, you'll see on the slide here the second kind of item under internally restricted reserves from the bottom. So passport-approved capital projects. So the next two slides kind of highlight what those projects relate to and what our annual amortization for those projects are. So again, these are projects that we committed to spend our capital reserve funding on in the past. And now every year that we amortize those assets, we incur a cost for amortization related to them that we have to pay out of our reserves for it under public sector accounting standards. So you can see that we're going from twelve point four million in those assets down to, or up to twelve point seven. So we were projecting a slight increase in additional costs this year related to our community use upgrades for TURFs and tracks of seven hundred and fifty, fifty thousand. There's a slide that should be familiar to everybody. This basically kind of explains sort of what are surplus, what a compliant budget and non-compliant budget are. So a balanced budget is for us to have zero. So our revenues equal our expenses. A surplus is anything where our revenue is higher than our expenses. A compliant budget, again, this is per the regulation. This is the one percent that we're allowed to incur of our revenue for to be a compliant budget, but it takes out certain expenses and it takes out certain revenues. So it's taking out our development charges, revenue, our school-generated fund revenue, and it takes out our school-generated fund expenses, and then it adds some compliance components back into expenses that the ministry requires. So where we are for this budget is we're compliant on our Board Admin and Governance. And we will be compliant without requiring further compliance by the time we come back to the board. As you can kind of see, there's a two-dollar difference here, and that was rounding in the ministry reporting system that we caught kind of after we produced the report for the board meeting. So when we come back, that two dollars will be gone, and we will be compliant from a board perspective. But if we were to go kind of over or go into kind of a deficit, again, we have four million dollars is the one percent threshold for next year that we would be able to spend into before requiring ministry compliance.
So the next steps, everyone, is we'll bring, hopefully, we will be bringing back on June 21st a final budget for the Board of Trustees to approve. We'll take back any feedback, do some further analysis, make sure everything ties to what it should tie to, and we'll bring it back to trustees at the June 21st meeting to go over again for final approval. That concludes our presentation. Are there any questions or comments or feedback?
Thank you, Superintendent Loftz and Mr. Cross. Really appreciate your presentation. We have several hands up here. So let's go down the speaker's list. We have Trustee Ohun Chanada, Vice Chair Agnew, Trustee De Rosa, and Trustee Murphy. But Trustee Ohun Chanada, you have the floor.
Thank you. And through you, Mr. Chair, Superintendent Loftz. Superintendent Loftz, hi, how are you? I'm just questioning. So at the beginning, and I may have taken bad notes here, but secondary, we have some growth based upon the numbers we have now. And elementary is stagnant. In the proposed budget here, the classroom instruction is off by one point two, one point two-six percent. So it's down. I don't quite understand the relation if our secondary is growing and our elementary is stagnant, why are those expenses lower by one point two-six percent? Maybe you could help me with that?
Superintendent Loftz?
Yeah, overall, as a system, we're stagnant. We also have some adjustments as well for our, maybe we'll bring up the sliding question, just so we can all look at it. So the classroom teachers side, that's the one you're questioning, correct? Trustee Ohun Chanada? Hello? Four point three, is that? Sorry, Trustee Ohun Chanada, can you hear me? Can everyone hear me?
Your answer, can you repeat your question, please?
Yes. No, my question was Superintendent Loftz. So yes, is the column where it says subtotal classroom instruction, which shows a minus one point two-six percent change? Based upon secondary overall growth and elementary being stagnant? I don't quite understand that number there. That's what I'm asking.
We also had a number, and as you know, we had some adjustments to coming out of the COVID where we had a board mandate of twenty-five to one with respect to our classroom size. With the enrollment not materializing last year, there was some adjustments that had to be done within that area of the budget. And that's what we're seeing now as well. Adam, is there anything to add?
No, that's essentially what we're doing here for this budget. So two years ago, the board made a motion to reduce our class sizes. We could fully fund that with the money that the province gave us two kind of budgets ago or two fiscal years ago. And then last year, we were projecting to have more enrollment, or seeing our enrollment kind of get back to our normal sort of projections, and then that didn't come to fruition. And what we had done to start was to hard cap all our classes at twenty-five to one. So we're still kind of below the ministry funding calculations in terms of our classroom teacher or our total instruction or people foundation calculation. And so what we're doing here, now that we no longer have that funding from the province, and we no longer have the reserves available to continue artificially lowering our classroom sizes, kind of increased our classroom sizes back to the normal rates that we're funded for. And as a result, we're seeing a reduction in classroom teachers. So last year, when we were looking at our COVID costs, so we had classroom teachers budgeted at ten point five million. This year, we only have two point one. So that's kind of like the big swing that we're seeing when it comes to classroom instruction.
One thing to remind trustees as well is that revised estimates, this year, this past year, we had a deficit of around six million dollars. So something to remember as well. So we were kind of starting off on that point.
Pause you for a second. It's eleven, eleven oh one. We need to do some housekeeping here. We need to have a motion to extend by thirty minutes. Can somebody move that we extend?
I'll move.
He moves. Trustee De Rosa, would you second?
Yes, I will.
Okay, we extend, moved by Trustee Murphy, seconded by Trustee De Rosa. Trustee Ohun Chanada?
I think, yeah, Superintendent Loftz was in mid-sentence there. So I'm sorry, Superintendent Loftz.
My apologies.
You start again.
Yeah, certainly. Just reminding everyone that we were also in a deficit this past December for revised estimate around six million dollars. So again, as Adam mentioned, the enrollment did not materialize again, COVID-related. And we had to use some of that reserve that we had accumulated from the previous year and utilize it this year.
It's muted. Superintendent Loftz, can you hear me?
Yep.
We're just in the middle of a vote to extend.
My apologies, sorry.
Again.
I led you in the wrong direction. I apologize. So bad, sorry.
So Trustee, how do you vote?
In favor.
Vice Chair Agnew?
In favor.
Trustee Murphy?
In favor.
Trustee O'Brien?
In favor.
Trustee De Rosa?
In favor.
Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Trustee Boy?
In favor.
Trustee Master Hammer?
Trustee Tokiba?
Trustee Tokiba? And Trustee Duarte is in favor. Motion carries. Sorry, Superintendent Loftz, you were in the middle of a sentence. You'll have to start the whole sentence again.
Okay, certainly. Just to remind everyone that we were in a six-million-dollar deficit back in December of this year that we were estimating for the current school year, largely due to the fact that our enrollment didn't materialize as it did for a lot of GTA boards in the, in this school year that we thought was going to kind of return to a more normal situation where it actually did not. So that's one other thing, another thing to remember as well. So it wasn't sustainable.
Thank you, Trustee Ohun Chanada. Vice Chair Agnew, you're up next.
Thank you. And through you, Mr. Chair, Superintendent Loftz, how are you? Okay, I've got a couple of questions. So let me start with this. So I'm seeing the dollar amount there with respect. Sort of pay attention to the comments around adjustments. And I see the dollar amount there, but are you able to speak to what does that actually mean with respect to that adjustment? I mean, it's a decrease. So what are the numbers we're looking at as far as a decrease in staffing?
Superintendent Loftz?
One thing I should mention, Trustee Agnew, is that we had to estimate, essentially, we were right sizing. I don't know if that's the right word to use or not, and probably because of that additional staffing that we had with the twenty-five to one, where we had quite a, I'm trying to think back now, I believe there was about sixty or so teachers that were added back in the summer of twenty-twenty. Like we mentioned before, what happened with that was it wasn't adjusted. And again, it was due to enrollment. We assumed that enrollment, based on all the past history of doing projections that it would materialize, and it didn't. And in fact, we went down. We didn't even get to the enrollment we had estimated for the fall. It actually went lower. So that had a real big impact on our staffing numbers or our requirements. So this current year, that led to our large deficit that we had for this current year. For next year, and maybe I'll let, and I'm not sure if Superintendent Oldman is on the phone or on the call to address it. I can kind of address it to a degree. So we did decrease the number of, and I think that's what you're asking if, Trustee Agnew, is how many staff we decreased. And again, it's tied to our enrollment numbers. If our enrollment numbers are stagnant and we were already overstaffed to begin with, which is why we had a six-million-dollar deficit. I believe it was, and again, I don't want to misquote here, but we're, I'm not sure if it was in the hundred. But I think those numbers were kind of shared today, about a hundred and thirteen or so of the, I'm going, trying to find the email right now, the exact email that came across.
Director Diddy? Thank you, Mayor. So redundancies that we're projecting right now for twenty-two, twenty-three, and that's as of, as a, is a hundred and fourteen for elementary and thirteen for secondary. It's likely that the secondary number will probably get a little bit closer to in, obviously with a hundred and fourteen for elementary. It's unlikely. So trustees are aware that some of these are projected redundancy. There would be a possibility for a number of those teachers, we try to absorb them into year-long LTOs. So while they wouldn't have a full-time position at a school, they would have a full-year LTO position. So in terms of filling those long-term LTOs, it would go to redundant teachers first before we go to occasional teachers.
Thank you. Vice Chair Agnew, you have a follow-up?
I do. So, okay, and you, well, okay. So you spoke to teachers, and I know that there's also ECEs in that are and so, so I'm hearing that there is a combination of reasons why. So part of it is a reduction in enrollment. Part of it is because of normalization of class sizes. And is there, and I'm assuming that there is a piece from virtual or no? Is that a piece of that? Because I'll go back and have another question about that. So if you could just speak to the three different, or the different components, if you will, that are contributing to those adjustments, that would be extremely helpful.
Director Diddy?
I'll start. So certainly, the first two that you mentioned, Vice Chair Agnew, the decrease in enrollment and the way that we've staffed over the last two years because of available COVID funding and available lists that we use to keep our class sizes much lower than we would contractually, those are the two biggest, the two biggest factors. And that would also account for some of the redundancies with ECEs as our, we wanted to ensure that we, our kindergarten classrooms were looked after. Maybe I could ask Superintendent Oldman, I'm not sure if the virtual school for this year has as much of an impact, but maybe I'll ask her, she could give a little bit more detail, if that's okay.
With your permission, through you, Mr. Chair?
Yes, Superintendent Oldman, please proceed.
So Trustee Agnew, yeah, the virtual being obviously a prominently elementary reality, that was contemplated. That's why some of that staff surveying, or sorry, parent surveying for students was contemplated in that. So there will be some continuation, but it is a lower extent. So that would have been an absorbed reality into the staffing redundancies. So there's not a further impact, I guess, is all that's to say.
Thank you. Next on the speaker's list, we have Trustee De Rosa. Trustee De Rosa, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Either Dan or Superintendent Loftz. So correct me if I'm wrong, but what we're comparing here is the current estimates that we hope to put forward versus the estimates for the same period last year. And I underline estimates. So we're comparing estimates to estimates and drawing variances from last year's estimates to this year's estimates. Is that what we're doing?
Superintendent Loftz?
Through you, Mr. Chair. It's the revised estimates that we had in December, what we thought our costs would be for the current year, being twenty-one, twenty-two, comparing that to we currently estimate for the upcoming year, twenty-two, twenty-three.
Okay, so it's estimates to estimates, and that's what we're drawing the variances from, and that is certainly useful. But my other question is, are we ever going to be able to see what the estimates of this year comparison to the actuals of last year? So that we can see exactly what we spent as to, as opposed to what we estimated to spend versus what we're planning to spend, okay, for twenty-two, twenty-three? Because surely, and I'll cite an example, a practical example, is let's take classroom teachers, for instance, that are there at two hundred and forty thousand or two hundred and forty-one thousand estimated last year versus the two hundred and thirty-six thousand that we are estimating last year. I think it would be useful to do that comparison of twenty-two, twenty-three estimates to what we actually spent in classroom teachers last year. Are we ever going to see those numbers? Even if we have to wait on a year basis so that we can evaluate? Even if we have to wait on a year basis so that we can evaluate the current budget that we want to put through comparison to the actuals? And I'm not diminishing the analysis that's being presented here, but I think, I think it, it's pretty important to understand what we actually spent in, in comparison to what we're, we're presenting to spend the budget for next year. So that's my overall comment on this. Thank you.
I'm not sure if it's a question or a comment.
No, it's a question. It's clearly a question. Will we ever get to, to see the actuals in comparison to the budget before we approve it for the corresponding period?
Mr. Chair, it's very difficult to provide that information, given that this current year is not complete. We do provide an update. As you, everyone knows, we provide a quarterly update. We used to provide monthly updates and where we are relative to the current year versus estimates, and we were always in line. What trustee De Rosa is asking for is an actual figure on a period that isn't complete until August, but we have to approve the budget in June. So it's very difficult to bring in actual numbers when we're not completed our year yet. But having said that, we do provide the board quarterly reports now. It used to be monthly. We had the monthly ones and they changed to quarterly, where we do provide the board an update as to where we are compared to what we estimated at revised to where we were at actuals at that point in time.
Thank you. Superintendent Loft, can you hear me?
I can, yes.
Trustee De Rosa, do you have a follow-up question to your first question?
Yes, I do, Mr. Chair. So what we don't have, and correct me if I'm understanding this the wrong way, is that we don't have a way we can accumulate year-to-date actuals and compare them to a year-to-date budget.
You, Mr. Chair, as I mentioned before, we do provide that information.
You provide a year-to-date budget?
We do. We have, most recently, a couple of meetings ago, we provided a quarterly update for trustees.
So may I make a, may I make a request?
Trustee De Rosa, please address your question to the chair and not directly to the superintendent, okay? We'll try to maintain some order. So trustee De Rosa, go ahead. Trustee De Rosa, I can't hear you. Okay, we'll move down the speaker's list. Next up, up is trustee Murphy. Trustee Murphy, you have the floor.
Mr. Chair, with all due respect, I haven't finished my request.
De Rosa, I called out a couple of times and you did not respond. So and I gave
That's because I was muted, Mr. Chair.
Questions? I'll put you back in the list. There are other trustees waiting in line. Let's respect everybody. Trustee Murphy, you have the floor. Trustee De Rosa, I'll come back to you. Trustee Murphy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And through you, Superintendent Loft, in the revenue, we see the EDC revenue is going down from 12 million to 10 million, but antidoteally, construction activity is up and building permits are up. Can you explain that drop?
Superintendent Loft?
Certainly. Through you, Mr. Chair. It doesn't necessarily have an impact, just so everyone is aware, trustee Murphy. It doesn't impact our overall revenue that we can spend as a board. It's an estimate that we have. We've had very strong revenues within the EDCs in the last few years, the record, record number of revenue for EDCs in the last couple of years. Again, it's a forecast. Interest rates are going up. We'll adjust at revised if we feel that that we're going to be getting more EDC revenue. But just so everyone knows, just because we get more EDC revenue, all we're essentially doing is paying down our, our EDC deficit. So it's not a material impact per se to our board overall for our board spending, but what it is doing is helping us to reduce our, overall our interest costs as well as reduce our outstanding EDC borrowing balance. I'm not sure if that's a clear answer, trustee Murphy or not, but that's, yeah, okay.
That was a good answer. I forgot we have, we're running a deficit in that, in that account anyway, right?
Yeah.
Second question, so JK and SK enrollment is down. And also in, in Milton, we had the impact of St. Ceteri going to Pearson, which reduced our numbers. So if, hopefully, there's a rebound, and if there is a rebound, and it comes later in the year, we only find out in August or September, what are rebound plan like? And maybe this is a question for Superintendent Oldman or Director Dilly is, is, you know, how quick or practical can we respond to, I want to, I don't want to use the term a spike in enrollment, but, but an increase in enrollment that gets us back on track to what our projections were.
Thank you. I'll pass this to Director Dilly.
Yeah, maybe I'll start. So in terms of, if, if we do increase in enrollment between now and September, and we probably will, but it's, it's hard to know what that number will be. But if we do see an increase in impacts on class size, then like we would in kind of pre-COVID years, we'll look at the actual numbers in September. And if, you know, something as small as 10 students at a school, depending on the grade level, might necessitate us having to reorganize a school and perhaps put another teacher in place. It really, it kind of depends on the number of students and, and what grade level they, they fit into because we do have to follow the ministry regs in terms of class sizes. So that's how we would respond to those sorts of jumps in growth. Again, if we think back to kind of prior to COVID, that would be kind of a typical, a typical response at the beginning of the year if we had unanticipated growth in enrollment. I don't know if maybe this would be the appropriate time, but maybe Superintendent Oldman, and I don't know if this question's going to come up, but maybe, just so we, we all understand, when we're talking about redundant teachers and how they might get called back, maybe a little bit on that process.
Superintendent Oldman?
Thank you. And through you, Mr. Chair. So there is language that we can locally, and then there's additional kind of supplemental language, at least as it relates to the OACTAs. So the secondary and elementary declared redundancies. There would be similar layoff language with our QPD ECEs as it relates to a recall period. But essentially, what it would be is when we see, you know, some, I guess, lift in enrollment or say there were some budgetary lifts that would come in through, so additional funding to supplement in any way. What we would do is essentially, we would look in reverse order of the, the recall list that we have, which is driven by seniority, which has, you know, tiebreaker factors and the like in it. We would recall individuals to those permanent positions accordingly. So that would be true for DCEs and our teachers and the like. The process may look a little different, but ultimately, we would be going in reverse order in, in compliance with our local language of the collective agreement. So that process will vary about when and how, but that's kind of an ongoing evolution in, in the staffing process. That as, as those triggers, whether that's due to enrollment or otherwise, we would be recalling individuals to that. And in the absence of being able to fully do that, we would offer alternative gainful employment to those individuals so to offset the loss of, of permanent work while in a, in a redundant, non-recalled state.
And, and some of that offset calling would be, so for example, you know, we know that we're going to have, as we do every year, we would have lengthy LTOs, either full year for, for whatever so in the past, those jobs would have probably gone to teachers on our LTO or our OT, our OT list. We would fill those jobs first with teachers who have been declared redundant, so they would have that full-year employment. Correct?
That is correct. Yeah. So we would be obligated by the central terms to do so in that regard as well, Director Dilly. So that certainly would be, we would obviously look, and we're in that process now of trying to understand how many full-year LTOs that we would have so that we are able to, you know, really realize out of, you know, the numbers that we've stated of, of those declarations, how many we would be able to offer in alternative work for the year. Secondary, that may look semester-based. Elementary, that may be full-year in regard. But the work, we're in that work right now to be as proactive as we can, appreciating it. It is a large number for our elementary panel.
Thank you, Superintendent Oldman. I'll now jump to trustee Carabella. You've spoken. Trustee Carabella, you have the floor.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to follow up with trustee De Rosa was speaking about the actuals. And Superintendent Loft said that in, at the end of August is, is when the actuals for the year are available. So I'm wondering, Superintendent Loft, do we look at the actuals in, at the end of the year so that we really can compare what we estimated we would spend and what we actually spent? And does that report ever come to the board? I don't think it does, but it seems like an interesting report whether in the end of August, if the actuals line up with the estimates.
Superintendent Loft?
Yes, through you, Mr. Chair. That would be our year-end financial statements, trustee Carabella. So when we bring our year-end financial statements, we compare it back to budget.
And when, when do we get those?
In this, in November.
And it has, it had, follow-up? Sorry, Mr. Chair? May I have a follow-up?
Yes, trustee, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. So I think I muted myself. So there's going to be like, I like simplicity. There's going to be one column with the actuals, and it's dated August, and then with the estimates and whether we were close or not, or some cases we'd be over, some cases we'd be under.
Superintendent Loft?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Good to jump to Vice Chair Agnew. Vice Chair Agnew?
Thank you. And through you, Mr. Chair. Are we, do you know if any other, it's just, it's, it seems, it feels like it's a large number of staff for various different reasons that we've had to make adjustments on, if that's the right term. Are we seeing similar numbers like that in other boards? Do you know?
Pass this to Superintendent Oldman.
Thank you. And through you, Mr. Chair. Trustee Agnew, as a result of the COVID funding that was kind of temporarily offered, we are obligated, boards were obligated to hire permanent staff in the teaching domains when, when hiring additional staff with the COVID dollars. So this has been an experience by a number of boards, yes, to varying extents by, based on, on board size. But this is certainly a reality that has come from, from that. I think ours is exasperated by the fact that we also maybe are met with, with, you know, an unprecedented kind of stagnation and, and maybe enrollment. So I think it's a combination of that and what we're realizing. But I do think the redundancy declarations is, is, is being widely experienced by other boards. Yes.
Thank you. Vice Chair Agnew, you have a follow-up?
Yeah, so just a follow-up. So when we talk about class sizes being normalized again, because I think that was the term that was used, was normalized. When we're taking a look at that class sizes piece, were there any conversations among senior leadership or among the group taking a look at what those class sizes looked like, especially from kindergarten to grade three? You know, and, and was there a conversation about perhaps looking to maintain those smaller class sizes, given the learning gaps, given the impacts that students have had on them, especially in those earlier grades? You know, it's just a little bit concerning that we're losing the number of DCEs we are losing, and we're seeing those class sizes for those lower grades increase again. So I'm just curious if that was part of the conversation when the budgets were being looked at and those adjustments were being made?
Superintendent Oldman? Or Erin?
Maybe I'll, I'll start off if, if that's okay, Superintendent Oldman, and maybe you can jump in after. We do have, as, as trustees may be aware of, we do have the 3.2 million that we had in tutoring funding to assist with that as well, to kind of help with that. So we have that 1.6 million for next year. We also have the 1.6 that we're spending currently. We haven't heard whether we can carry some of that 1.6 forward or not, but we definitely have, the ministry has provided that additional funding for tutoring supports, which is also going to kind of go along the lines of what you've mentioned, trustee Agnew, is that funding to assist our students that they have had some learning difficulty as a result of the pandemic in the last couple of years.
Director Dilly?
Yeah, so thank you. And through you, Mr. Chair. So those specific conversations at the primary level, no. I would, at least for, for our classes one to three, remind trustees that they are capped at 23. So the class sizes, I mean, smaller is better. Obviously, smaller is always better, we think. But they are capped at, at a hard cap of 23 by the ministry regulation. So what we've done is staff the schools based on what the ministry regulations are. I think that's probably the best way to describe.
Thank you. Vice Chair Agnew, you have a question?
I do. So I just have a follow-up. When looking at the ability for those, for those staff who have been deemed redundant, are all of those redundant, are all of those redundant positions being posted? Yeah, that's my question. Are all of those redundant positions being posted?
Superintendent Oldman?
Thank you. And through you, Mr. Chair. So we would be following the collective agreement, trustee Agnew, and what is prescribed in our local terms in that regard. I think it's fair to probably illustrate the fact that our collective agreements, we have an experience. I think we've, we've kind of shared this in the past. It's been quite some time since we've experienced redundancy at Holton Catholic. So it's probably fair to indicate that the language doesn't necessarily contemplate fully what a redundancy situation would be. I think we've been working in great partnership, recognizing that piece with our union affiliate partners in that regard. So I mean, I guess it really would come into question of when, if a position is no longer existing, because that is the definition of redundancy, what would the position be posted as, I guess, is really, would be the question and response.
Thank you, Superintendent Oldman. Moving on to the next speaker, we have trustee De Rosa. Trustee De Rosa, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you. My, I'll be brief. What I'd like to see, what I'd like to see, if it's possible, because I'm hearing from Superintendent Loft that he does have this information.
De Rosa, can I ask you? Can you hold on for a minute?
Yeah.
And we need to decide whether we are going to continue for the next 30 minutes. So need, need a mover to extend by another 30 minutes.
Move to Brian.
Move by trustee O'Briens.
I will second.
Trustee De Rosa seconds. I'll take it to a recorded vote. Vice Chair Agnew? Trustee Murphy?
In favor.
Trustee O'Brien?
In favor.
Trustee De Rosa?
In favor.
Carabella?
In favor.
De Boy?
In favor.
Trustee Master Hammer? Trustee Tokiba? Trustee Tokiba? Trustee Hunchenada? And trustee Duarte is in favor. We have all in favor and no opposed, so we can continue for another 30 minutes. Trustee De Rosa, you have the floor.
Thank you very much. For Superintendent Loft, before the next meeting where we are responsible, where we are scheduled to approve the budget, is it possible to have these reports in the following manner? Year-to-date actuals for the year versus year-to-date estimated budget? And if so, can we have them before that meeting?
Any, any action to, to staff would have to be through a motion. Staff will present the reports in the formats they normally present and required by the ministry. So if there's something that you need, you'll have to move or, or bring a notice of motion and bring it to the board, and then trustees will vote on it as an action. and bring it to the board and then trustees will vote on it as an action.
I raise the motion now as it's generic to the topic?
Fortunately, not at this point in time, trustee De Rosa. You'll have to bring a notice of motion.
Is there a ruling? Can we ask the, the parliamentarian to give his opinion on this? It is the topic.
That no action item shall come out of an information item or a staff report. And I've circulated documents to all trustees sometime back. I can send it again to you, trustee De Rosa. We are not going at, we are not going this path. Thank you. Seeing no further.
I will take, if I can continue, if I can continue my question, I will be satisfied with one thing.
Go ahead.
Superintendent Loft assurance that he can produce or cannot produce the reports I've asked for.
Superintendent Loft?
Through you, Mr. Chair.
Director Daly?
That, that request, as, as you noted, should come through a motion. A motion is not coming.
Thank you, trustee De Rosa. I think I made it very clear. So seeing no other hands up, I think we had a robust discussion on the, the budget estimates. So Superintendent Loft and, and Mr. Cross, I want to thank you for all the hard work you have done in putting this together. I'm not sure that $2 will come from the difference.
Mr. Chair, I did have my hand up.
Trustee Carabella, okay, I'll give that to you.
I have my hand up for one last question. And it's really just a quick question in regard to what trustee De Rosa asked, because he didn't ask for a motion. He just asked if trust, if Superintendent Loft has that information available. He didn't ask for a motion, but just whether that information is available.
Okay, so let me, trustee Carabella, let me ask Superintendent Loft. Superintendent Loft, do you have that information readily available? Or do you have to create it and generate the report?
Through you, Mr. Chair. As trustees are aware, we do bring quarterly reports. We will be bringing a quarterly report as of the end of May to the next board meeting as well, and it will be included up to date, up to the end of May, just like we do in every year as part of our quarterly reports, which will include, and I believe trustee Carabella asked that question last time, does it include the year-to-date? The last time we brought the, I believe it was as of the May 28th as of date. And I believe trustee Carabella, you asked if we include the, the year-to-date on those reports, and I pointed out that, that we do. So we'll be doing the same thing for the May 31st report as well.
Thank you. Thank you, trustee Carabella, and thank you, Superintendent Loft and your team. Once again, amazing work you, you do with the, the large amounts of budgets that we have to deal with, and thank you so much again. Moving on to the next order of business is the 2022, item 9.3, 2022, 23 International Student Program Conferences. International Consultants for Education and Affairs, Superintendent Cordiero, please, please present the highlights of your report.
Thank you and through you, Mr. Chair. Good evening, everyone. The more, the purpose of this report is to share information about the HCSB's requested attendance at the International Student Conferences in Berlin, Germany, dated October 30th to November 1st, 2022, and San Diego, California, dated December 15th to the 17th in the same year, 2022. Both events are recommended by ISF, the International Consultants for Education and Affairs. The conference provide an excellent opportunity for development of partnerships with top quality international agencies and government officials. Information about the two conferences is found in Appendix A, and for a projected cost breakdown, please refer to Appendix B. A recommendation for consideration will be presented at the upcoming June 21st regular board meeting. Through you, Mr. Chair, if there are any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Thank you, Superintendent Cordiero. Trustees, do we have any questions for Superintendent? I see trustee Ohanchanada, trustee Ohanchanada, you're the floor.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair, just want to say to Superintendent Cordiero, just based upon the budget estimates that we've just seen, our international students has dropped, the estimate has dropped. So I think sometimes this is costing the board some money. There, but I think sometimes you have to spend money to create revenue, so I'm totally in support of it.
Thank you, trustee Ohanchanada. Trustee Murphy, you have the floor.
Thank you and through you, Mr. Chair, to Superintendent Cordiero. Given the increase in, in online learning and virtual learning, been a negative impact on the ability to draw students to our board, because if, if they're not, if they're learning virtually, they can go to anywhere in the world and cost no longer really is, is that much of a factor. So what, what impact has that had and how do you see that impact moving forward?
Superintendent Cordiero?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good question, trustee Murphy. We've actually experienced over the last 18 months, a increase in secondary school international student enrollment, 71 students to projected 107 for September 2022. So we have had significant growth in our international student commitment. The vast majority of students across the world want the international experience of living in person in that foreign country, interacting socially and academically with the students of that nation of choice. So we are not, we are not seeing the online learning experience impacting the in-person registrations. What we have had over the last 18 months or so has been the impact of COVID. But as COVID restrictions have been diminished over the last three or four months, what we are now witnessing across our system is increased growth in international students wanting to come to our board for an in-person learning experience.
Thank you, trustee Murphy. You have a follow-up?
No, that's good news. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. I see no other trustees' hands up. So Superintendent Cordiero, thank you so much for presenting your report. We will now, now move on to the next staff report, item 9.4, September 2022 Works Indigenous Peoples Education Conference. Superintendent Crowell, could you please present the highlights of your report?
Certainly. It's through you, Mr. Chair. It's my pleasure to present this report. It is a wonderful opportunity for Sherri Sable to attend the World Indigenous Peoples Education Conference. I am, with your permission, I'd like to invite her into the meeting to speak to this a little bit further.
Yes, hello. Good morning. Good morning. It will be soon. Good evening, everyone. Yes, I want to just briefly just chat with you a little bit about the conference 2019. I had put an abstract in for the World Indigenous Education Conference, and because of COVID, it was postponed. However, they have, they have recently reached out to say that my, the abstract has been accepted. There was over 700 abstracts that were looked upon, and out of the 700, there were 70 that was accepted, and one of them was ours. It is a wonderful, like, it is a wonderful conference to, to go, to have that learning for world indigenous people, because it is really, you know, we're, we're looking at some of the curriculum that we have in grade 12 with the global perspectives on indigenous people. And, and that would be, you know, part of it, that we would be able to partner with different indigenous nations across the world to bring in that global perspective to our students. And, you know, it draws people from across the world, and over 5,000 people delegates have been in attendance and, and it is one of the most diverse indigenous conferences on this, on this planet. So just for the very part that, you know, Holton Catholic District School Board has put in an abstract to present and to present really on what we're doing as far as truth and reconciliation within our communities. And not only that, really increasing that awareness within our own schools when it comes to indigenous education. There is a breakdown of the cost of the, of the conference as well as, as well as, yeah, just the, sorry, the conference, the cost of the conference, and, and that the conference would be from September 26th to September 30th.
Thank you, Superintendent Crowell, and congratulations, Sherri, for your abstract being, being selected. Trustees, do we have any questions for Superintendent Crowell or Sherri? Seeing none, I'd like to thank you, Superintendent Crowell and Sherri for your presentation. And we will move on to the next item under staff reports, item 9.5, School Is an Officer Program. Director Daly, please present the highlights of your report.
Thank you. Excuse me. Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. So the purpose of this report is to provide trustees with an update to the recommendations that were presented at the April 19th, 2022 board meeting. I think I had the day wrong in the package, so I apologize for that typo. Trustees will recall at that meeting that the findings from the survey that we did throughout the board and in the community as well as the focus groups was presented, and we were asked to share that information at the meeting. I think we understand from the, the feedback that we had initially, that while most parents and most students indicated in that process that they felt the SO program should continue, there are still concerns among, among some regarding either the impact that police can have in schools or the potential impact, and by impact, I mean negative impact that police can have in schools. So we're hopeful that the update can address some of those concerns, provide how we, a little bit more specifics around how we would collect data and report it to give us a more consistent opportunity to evaluate the program on an ongoing basis. Excuse me. So in the report on page three, it does go through trying to, to answer some of the questions or feedback that we received from trustees the last time we brought the report forward. So staff will continue to work with our school administrators to help them find alternative community organizations that might engage with parents or students around things like internet, social media safety, sexual exploitation, healthy relationships, mental health, bullying prevention. Some of those programs that perhaps in the past, we, we did lean on our police services to, to make those presentations, and we've already seen, seen some changes in that since the spring. For those presentations that would be provided by, continue to be provided by the police, it would probably be around specific areas, things like, you know, Crime Stoppers presentations, or perhaps, you know, career education or career education opportunities. Parents would be notified in advance that those presentations were taking place in their child's classroom. Staff will collect feedback from students and school staff on presentations going forward, so we can assess them in a better way in terms of what's been effective and what's, what's not been effective. We talked earlier in the year, and back in December actually, about at the school level and specific, specifically, well, I guess both the elementary and secondary, but probably a little bit more specifically the secondary, that we had developed an app to be able to document police and SO visits to schools. And our proposal would be that we, we start to collect that data the first day of school, and we do it right through the school year. One of the things that we've, we've talked about with research services is trying to link that data, because right now that data would say when the police come in and, you know, kind of why they were called in, tell us much more than that. But we'd like to link that data to available student census data that we have. I think it's worth noting that when we did do our student census in the spring, we didn't have 100% of students fill out the, the census report. So being able to make that link, it would be, we'd only be able to link it to what the, what the data is that we have. It would help us monitor, much like how we want to use that data in, in other regards, to monitor where noted, any disproportionate impact that might be seen on racialized black indigenous youth. The reports would be shared annually with trustees. We'd continue on a yearly basis with stakeholder feedback, both in terms of survey and focus groups, so that we could monitor student and parent response to the program. That data would also be shared annually as part of the report to the Board of Trustees on the implementation of our multi-year strategic plan, so it would seem to align with that. We'll continue to engage with community organizations that can help us support our students and families at the school level. We'll ask our community organizations for input prior to the next revision of the school board protocol, school police services board protocol, so we share a police protocol as all, as all school boards do with our local police force, we share it with our board, our co-terminals board, and the two, the two French instruction boards. So we'd seek that community input prior to that process. And one of the things that, one of the things that was clear in the feedback that we did get was that both students and some parents were, well, I would say students and parents were unclear as to what the mandate of the program is. So we'd want to make that clear upfront yearly with school councils and with students, both in person, so at school council meetings, and on our board website as well, so we could do a better job of assessing whether or not that mandate's met. I do think, and hearing, hearing some of the, the delegation tonight, and also hearing, looking at some of the comments that we had back when we did do the focus groups and, and heard from our students and parents. You know, the feedback that we had in that, in that format was, was somewhat different maybe than what we heard tonight, but I, I don't think, that doesn't mean that, that those, those views that we heard tonight are not valid. I think it would be naive on our part to think that the impact and issues that happen, that have happened in other boards can't or don't happen here. But I think on the go-forward, being able to put some, put some of these things into place, we can try and help ensure that the negative experience that has potentially happened in other boards or has happened in other boards won't be replicated here. So that's the update that I have to bring to trustees tonight, and happy to answer any questions or get any further input that you think.
Thank you, Director Daly. Trustees, we have questions. I have only one hand up here. Trustee O'Brien, trustee O'Brien, you have the floor.
Thank, thank you through you, Mr. Chair, to Director Daly. Director Daly, on May 17th, we, we gave you a directive to fill a series, a set of conditions before the, before we felt that you could put the SO position back in place. It seems to me that you, you've clearly fulfilled the conditions. Are you ready to put the SO position back?
Director Daly?
I, I don't think it's, I, I think that, sorry, let me, let me put it this way. I think the conditions or the additional information that was sought, I think we have brought it forward. I think it's important to note, though, that much of what we're presenting tonight is work that we're doing internally here at the board. So I think that last piece of the puzzle is to also see what the, what the police services can add to it. But certainly, you know, there, there was a request, what, how would you collect data? Who would house the data? How could we use data? I think we have a better handle on that. How would it be reported back to the board? We're suggesting a schedule for it. We're suggesting yearly. Trustees might think that they might, might need to see it, you know, every six months or twice a year. I do believe that what we've been asked to bring back, we have.
Thank you. Trustee O'Brien, do you have a follow-up question?
So through you, Mr. Chair, Director Daly. So once you have the final piece on the way, are you, are you ready to put the SO back?
Director Daly?
Again, I, I, and I, I'm not, I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to not answer your question, trustee, trustee O'Brien. The, the pause that was put on was a pause that was put on by trustees, I think that, by a board motion, I shouldn't say. I think that by a board motion, I shouldn't say by trustees, it was by a board motion. I think that the, the, what the trustees have asked for, we've brought to the table. So I think it could continue. Yes.
Thank you, trustee O'Brien. Thank you, Director Daley. Trustee Ohan Chanada, you're up next, trustee Ohan Chanada.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair and Director Daley. You, great segue for myself. Part of taking the temperature check when it's, you know, if it's moving forward, to me, you know, until we're 100% confident that it's not creating negative effects should be more often than a year. It may just be my personal opinion. But I think checking it in shorter frequencies at the very beginning and then maybe extending it as we know it's on the proper path might be frugal. So I'm just kind of bringing that up for suggestion at this point.
Thank you, trustee Ohan Chanada. So we do not have any other trustees?
I have a question.
Sorry.
I actually have a parliamentary question.
Okay.
And it is in regards to the actual motion itself. I'm hearing that there's maybe some gray area about the conditions. So I, I look at the parliamentarian. There is gray area, but the way the motion is structured right now, it is a motion where if certain conditions are, are met, then the SO goes back in. Am I wrong in assuming that, Parliamentarian?
Parliamentarian Kapoor, can I ask a comment on that?
This is more of an interpretation of the wording of the motion, of the April 19th motion, which is more properly in the purview of the chair of the board. I, I can, I read the last resolved clause of the motion passed April 19th to say, be it further resolved that the program can then be reinstated. I believe your question, trustee O'Brien, was that if the conditions are met, it will be reinstated? The motion is permissive. It's not, it doesn't require that it be reinstated. It says it can then be reinstated.
It can be. So I guess I'm wondering who makes that decision if it's been fulfilled and whether or not the call can be made to home police services. Like, is that now?
Parliamentarian Kapoor, I think I can.
Thank you, Chair. As I was about to say, that is, that is more appropriately answered by the Chair.
Yeah, so trustee O'Brien, when we have motions, we give direction to our employee, which is one Director Daley, to get things done in the, in the system. So we have this motion here and we are given direction. We have given a set of conditions to be fulfilled. And it's up to Director Daley to get those conditions fulfilled. And, and we asked Director Daley, you asked specifically those questions to Director Daley, and he gave an answer. So that's where we are right now. And I think there may be some things pending there, some things to be attended to. And after that, the motion has given direction to Director Daley to execute the motion.
So just for clarity, Mr. Chair, once Director Daley fills that final piece that he was describing is fulfilled, he can make the call?
Yes, he has to bring a report back according to the motion and make the call. That's the way I, I would interpret that motion.
So then, does that mean there's one more report to come back?
Director Daley, could you?
I thought this was the report.
I guess my question would be, is, is there, is there more that trustees need me to?
In my opinion, no, but who makes that call? That's what I'm wondering. I, I feel the conditions have been made, but I'm only one trustee and I don't have that right.
So trustees have the opportunity now to ask questions and put a notice of motion in future if required and bring it to the board and then give further direction. As of now, the, there is a motion on the floor, which is executed already and Director Daley seems to be pretty confident it's done. There may be some outstanding items there.
But my point is, isn't the motion already done?
Yes.
Like, isn't, if it's done, shouldn't the call be made to reinstate the SO? That's what I'm saying.
Yes. So if the conditions are met, as per the motion, then Director Daley has the ability to, to install, reinstall the program.
So he does have that right?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, that's all I want to hear.
That's the direction the board has given. Now, if at all trustees think something different of the report, you're welcome to bring in a notice of motion and.
I, I entirely leave it to Director Daley at this point. Thank you so much, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. We have trustee Carabella. Trustee Carabella, you have your hands up.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So when, when does Director Daley think that final piece will be fulfilled, that, that the SO, SO program could begin again?
I'll pass this to Director Daley.
Well, I think it's really a matter of, of sharing the, this report. Obviously, I wanted to share, I mean, it's a public report, but I would share with trustees before I would share the final report with police services, but I would be in touch with them tomorrow.
Thank you. Trustee Carabella, do you have a follow-up question?
Well, the follow-up question would be then, would another report be coming on the June 21st meeting? And is it, is it within view that at the end of this year, at that meeting, we could know that the SO, SO program is reinstated and in place for September?
I'm not sure we have asked for that report, but I'll pass it to Director Daley.
I'm not sure we're being asked for. I, I, I think what I heard was when the requirements of the original motion were met, then we could move forward in reinstating the program. My intent, based on what I've heard tonight, would be to have that, to begin that conversation with the police tomorrow. I could certainly bring an update in terms of a school update or, but, I didn't anticipate bringing another staff report in two weeks, but if that's the will of the board, I can do that.
Thank you, trustee Carabella. Thank you, Director Daley. It's 11:59. We have housekeeping work through. We need to extend by another 30 minutes. We need unanimous consent, if at all. Give a few items. So let me take this to, let me ask for a motion to extend by 30 minutes. Need a mover?
Murphy?
Murphy, trustee Murphy, looking for a second, please.
Carabella?
Just, Bella seconds. Let me take it to a report. Trustee, why should I name?
Opposed.
Trustee Murphy?
In favor.
Trustee O'Brien?
Opposed.
Trustee De Rosa?
In favor.
Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
And trustee Duarte is in favor. Trustee Bowie?
In favor.
Trustee Masteramr?
In favor.
Tokiba?
In favor.
We, we need unanimous consent on this one. Motion fails. We have to end the meeting. We landed up at item number 10. So may I have a motion? We don't need a motion to adjourn. Trustee De Rosa, two leaders in the closing press. Trustee De Rosa.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In the name of the Father and the Son and the Holy Spirit, amen. Our Father, who art in heaven, allow be thy name, that kingdom come, that will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread and forgive us our trespasses as we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. For thine is the kingdom, the power and the glory forever and ever. Amen. In the name of the Father, the Son, the Holy Spirit, amen. Good night, everyone.
Good night, everyone. Thank you for a great meeting.
Good night. Good night.